Okay, we are recording. You're ready.
I now call to order the May tenth regular meeting of the Wellington Board of Trustees. The time being six thirty-eight. Please rise from the floor. Pledge of leavings.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can we get a roll call, please?
Trustee Gator.
Here.
Trustee Kenny.
Present.
Trustee Mason.
Here.
Trustee Teetz.
Here.
Trustee Wiegand.
Here.
Mayor Patton McDonald. Mayor Shosse.
Here.
Are there any amendments to the agenda this evening?
Yes, Mayor, I would like to request that item number one on the consent agenda, Water Now Alliance Project Accelerator Grant and Random of Understanding be removed from the consent agenda. I do have additional questions and comments on that. I would also like to request amending to move action item number four, which is ordinance ten dash twenty-two, in ordinance of the town of Wellington establishing the Wellington Finance Committee as a formal advisory board to the Board of Trustees up to action item number one, because we are going to be having the mayor appoint trustee liaisons to our boards. If we do approve the Finance Committee, he can just do that all at once versus having to bring that back in a separate action item at the later meeting. Now, that, I believe, needs a second and a vote to actually make that change.
A second. Can we get a roll call?
Trustee Gator.
Yes.
Trustee Kenny.
Yes.
Trustee Mason.
Yes.
Trustee Teetz.
Yes.
Trustee Wiegand.
Yes.
Mayor Shosse.
Yes.
Are there any conflicts of interest related to the items on the agenda this evening?
Well, we will move to item B one of the comment individual discussion. On agenda items are asked to sign up from the forum at the podium. Once called upon, please stand at the podium and state your name. You'll be limited to three minutes of public comment.
Non-agenda, is that what you said?
Yes, non-agenda items.
So, is the MOU now an agenda item?
Yes, ma'am.
So...
I just wanted to let you know that we had a meeting with, we might have to huddle in the areas, Kelly Hodeling.
Kelly Hodeling and Stephanie Anderson.
And Stephanie Anderson and the executive director of Arkrevlarmer County. And then trustee Kenny and trustee Teetz were present as well when we were going out, talking about how to make the Fourth of July more accessible to people with disabilities. It was a really great meeting. And then I just heard that Kelly and...
Stephanie.
Stephanie had their training today for ADA training, and they were able to look at a lot of resources and able to understand more clearly about ADA and get their questions answered. And it was a really great meeting. Got really great input from both trustees and great input from the town employees as well. And we were just really grateful that the executive director, it's David Monroe from Arkrevlarmer County, was able to come up. It was a really productive meeting, and it's the first of many meetings. And I'm just really grateful to the town for sending staff to get ADA trained. And I'm sure there'll be many more meetings and lots of collaboration going on. And I'm super grateful for it, and I'm really grateful to be a part of it. That's all.
Awesome.
So, we have a couple of proclamations this evening. The first one we have is Mental Health Awareness Month. So, mental health is essential to everyone's overall health and well-being. And all Americans experience times of difficulty and stress in their lives, and prevention is an effective way to reduce the burden of mental health conditions. And there is a strong body of research that supports specific tools that all Americans can use to better handle challenges and protect their health well-being. And mental health conditions are real and prevalent in our nation, and with early and effective treatment, those individuals with mental health conditions can recover and lead full, productive lives. And each business, school, government agency, healthcare provider, organization, and citizen shares the burden of mental health problems and has the responsibility to promote mental health wellness to support prevention efforts. Therefore, I, Kayla Shosse, do hereby proclaim May twenty twenty-two as Mental Health Month in the town of Wellington. As the mayor of Wellington, I also call upon the citizens, government agencies, public and private institutions, businesses, and schools in Wellington to recommit our community to increasing awareness and understanding of mental health, the steps our citizens can take to protect their mental health, and the need to appropriate and appropriate and accessible services for all people with mental health conditions. The next proclamation is for Kids to the Parks Day. May twenty-first, twenty twenty-two is the twelfth Kids to the Park Day organized and launched by the National Parks Trust, held annually on the third Saturday of May. And Kids to the Parks Day empowers kids and encourages families to get outdoors and visit local parks, public lands, and waters. And Kids to the Parks Day will broaden children's appreciation for nature and the outdoors. And Kids to the Parks Day will recognize the importance of recreating responsibly while enjoying the benefits of the outdoors. Now, I, Kayla Shosse, do hereby proclaim May twenty-first, twenty twenty-two is recognized as Kids' Parks Day in the town of Wellington and encourage the community to celebrate and get outdoors.
Yay!
Okay, we have ordinance number ten dash twenty-two.
Consent agenda.
Oh, shoot, sorry.
It's okay.
All right. The consent agenda consists of the Water Now Alliance Project Accelerator Grant, which was now moved to the agenda, minutes of the April nineteen special meeting, and minutes of April twenty-sixth regular meeting. Can I get a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second. Can we get a roll call?
Trustee Gator.
Yes.
Trustee Kenny.
Yes.
Trustee Mason.
Yep.
Trustee Teetz.
Yes.
Trustee Wiegand.
Yes.
Mayor Patton McDonald.
Yes.
Mayor Shosse.
Yes. Now, on to the action items. We have ordinance number ten dash twenty twenty-two, in ordinance of the town of Wellington establishing the Wellington Finance Committee as a formal advisory board to the Board of Trustees. Ms. Garcia.
Thank you, Mayor and trustees. Patty Garcia, Town Administrator. One of the great things about my role is watching citizens participate in the local government process and providing another avenue for our citizens to participate is through this Finance Committee. This was talked about at the end of last year, end of twenty twenty-one, and then I brought forward to the trustees in February of twenty twenty-two during a work session some ideas and concepts about how that Finance Committee could look. Because of the timing of it, we wanted, there was a decision made to wait to implement the Finance Committee to when the new Board of Trustees was in place so that, you know, the members of the Finance Committee could be determined based on the current makeup of the Board of Trustees. One of the things that will be a little different about this one if it were to be approved is there was a request by the trustees that the interview process for appointments for the residents would be done before the entire board. So, this would be a full interview process in a regular meeting or a special meeting before the trustees, and then the trustees would deliberate and make a decision on who would be appointed to that during a public meeting. There's always pros and cons to that, but I understand the intent. This is just definitely a higher-level type of a position, and the knowledge and expertise that will be needed by these appointees is paramount in order for it to be a successful Boarder Commission. The term would be for two years, which would coincide with the Board of Trustees' terms. So, every, even numbered year that there's an election in April, you would have new appointments or, you know, have an opportunity for reappointment for those members. Some of the items that I have included or that I did include pursuant to trustee direction as far as what the responsibilities are to include, so to review the town's annual draft budget, to make recommendations regarding town finances, the annual budget, long-range financial planning, monitor all required annual quarterly and monthly financial reporting to lenders and creditors, to review town revenues and actual expenses on a monthly basis, to review reports generated by outside consultants, and to provide independent review of the town's financial reporting processes, internal controls, and independent auditors. We did find, as I started looking around at other municipalities, lots of them have a Finance Committee of some sort, whether it's a Finance Committee or Audit Committee. Some are general budget oversight, which is what this one would be. Others were more policy directive. But I think this is a great idea for the Board to have this sort of oversight committee. Victoria Rumpel, who is our interim Finance Director, has worked with a lot of Finance Committees, so is very much aware of what's needed and how that onboarding looks. I did put into the packet the proposed timeline and potential meetings to get everyone on-boarded. I've heard from trustee Gator that he would like to see that reduced to maybe more like three meetings and maybe have the meetings be a little bit longer, maybe provide some information ahead of time so that it was not so much presentation material at the time of these onboarding meetings, but more of time for discussion and things like that, which is following in line with what you've been asking of the other boards and commissions. So, I have a meeting scheduled with Vic on Thursday to go through that and see what we can change and modify in order to meet that request, which, you know, makes a lot of sense. Five meetings every week is a lot, but there's a lot of information to learn. But I think depending on who you get on this advisory board, maybe that learning curve won't be as much. So, there is that, and I'm standing here for any questions that you may have.
Do you have any question from the Board of Trustees?
Can I only comment on the idea of the public interviews? And I know there's a lot of pros and cons, so everybody would be aware and have the same knowledge on those being interviewed. The thing that I want to caution you of and that occurred of in other communities is when there is a public meeting interview, you know, there is a lot of questions being asked. And my hope is that we would remain incredibly encouraging and friendly so that folks who were applying for a volunteer board would feel that encouragement and empowerment rather than, you know, interviews can go negative sometimes, unfortunately. And I would hate for someone to potentially not want to participate because of the risk of humiliation or, you know, public speaking is hard for a lot of people. So, someone wanting to volunteer for a small board that works privately versus being interviewed fully public is a different scenario. So, we need to, I think, work our best to make sure that it is friendly and inviting and welcoming. I'd hate for people to drop out just because of the interview process. Our other interviews are very intimate.
Sure. One of the things we can do to address that is we can do the U shape. So, have it like as a special meeting, set the tables up in a U shape like we have for work sessions where it's not as much on stage where somebody doesn't have to stand here and, you know, take the questions. And maybe that would be a little more, you know, welcoming as far as a scenario in order to provide those interviews. And then staff will work hard on creating some interview questions and of course have them headed by the trustees, you know, to make sure that they are, you know, hitting the mark that you're looking for.
Perhaps can those interview questions be distributed prior to the interview so that people feel more confident, maybe, or have prepared responses? Because thinking on your feet when you're not a great public speaker is really scary.
Especially in front of a lot of people.
In front of a lot of people. So, maybe people, if they had notes or they had references or prepared answers, they would be more confident in that. So, maybe that's a consideration. I know we can work through all these details later, but I just want to make sure that that's a known theme concerning.
Work on that for work session.
I'm in agreement with that. I mean, typically you want to think on the feet, but that's not really what we're looking for in these. So, we're not really concerned. But we're more looking for you to have an answer to the question. And so, I think it's a great idea to give it to them ahead of time and help make them feel comfortable. And I agree. We don't want it to be negative. We want people to be on a horse.
Otherwise, I'm totally in favor of this.
I would be in favor, as long as it's a work session. Because I'm not sure the people that are interviewing for the public would totally understand that maybe they might be accidentally disclosing something that's a public record, that's permanent forever, that is not necessarily something that they would have intended to disclose had they realized that that is the difference between having an interview in a public meeting versus that intimate setting. So, I just urge caution that we don't walk ourselves into a trap related to that.
When you interview for a job, you don't usually interview in front of the entire company and all their customers?
Sure.
Usually interview in front of a small...
I think that's the, if we can...
Could we?
Address.
And that's a question I have for Mr. Sapienza. If the interviews were to happen like that, could they give direction as to who to appoint in a work session?
It's an act, as long as notice is given, discussion can be had in the work session, but no actual decision can be made. So...
So, they could give you direction.
There can be interviews that can give you direction, but the decision-making itself needs to take place at a regular meeting.
Another meeting, yep.
So, you could do the interviews one meeting, you could give a little direction for maybe some background, and then come to the next meeting, have full discussion, and an appointment at that.
Thank you.
I like that because it gives us some time to think on decisions. Because sometimes sleeping on it brings us a different perspective.
We'll make it work.
I did have a couple of things. So, I'm at the right spot on here. So, I'm very excited about this. I know this actually came out of a conversation that Ms. Garcia and I had at the end of December last year after a situation that happened. And then she actually had seen it before and thought about that. I spoke with the mayor in Salida as a functioning Finance Committee. He gave me a lot of great input on that. And so, I'm very excited to actually see this come through. I did bring up the concerns about just limited onboarding meetings. Again, just it's a huge workload to five, and again, that's a detail I think we can work out. One of the suggestions I shared with Ms. Garcia was maybe either finding video presentations done by others or just doing like someone going through the PowerPoint in front of their webcam so that we can send that ahead of time, just so that we can tell them, watch the hour and a half presentation, and then come to the meeting and we can have discussion. That might be one way to do that. The only other change that I wanted to suggest is I like that it's two-year terms. So, basically, each board gets to set their own Finance Committee. I think that's huge. The one concern I have is having it immediately after the election. I think we kind of ran into, that was challenging to be like our first meeting and appointing people. So, I would just recommend that maybe we say have it like be a June appointment. So, give, when there's an election, have like two months.
Sure. Well, we can make it coincide with whatever date this one is. So, this particular appointment process would be the first one, and then it would be every two years after that. So, whatever, I think we decided maybe the interviews appointments made June fourteenth.
Oh, okay. So, that would be perfect. Okay, great.
Just in line with that.
Perfect. Then I'm good with it.
Okay, perfect.
No, I am super excited about this. I would just love the idea of getting someone else's feedback that has a background in finance. So, I'm really hoping we have some great candidates that apply and welcome them with open arms.
I agree with her. I think it's great having the community be involved. And again, second eyes on it. So, appreciate it.
I have a question. The desire was to have two-year terms that are at the, from June on, not coterminous with the actual board?
Correct.
I would say June on, yes.
Or whenever they are appointed for two years, not coterminous with the terms of the board, correct?
Yeah, that was where I had the concerns. It sounded like...
And that's the language that's in the ordinance that's in the packet is coterminous with the term of the Board of Trustees.
Right. And ten wants to be with, like, with the election, not necessarily on the same date, but...
I think we could end that sentence after two years.
Okay.
I think that would work. But if this gets brought up for motion today, I recommend I'll draft some language then.
Okay. We can remove that in a heartbeat.
Are there any comments from the public on this agenda? No? Okay. Any final comments from the Board?
So, let me just find the language here that we're addressing. It's in section two sixteen thirty.
Trustee, are you trying to make more additions?
Yes, ma'am.
Well, if we're not making these appointments till June, can we maybe table the resolution until the next meeting?
The ordinance, so, the timing of the ordinance is important because it's an ordinance and it doesn't go into effect for thirty days.
Oh, that's fine. My bad. Thank you.
It's okay. It's all good.
Might we get the better language then?
It's in two sixteen thirty, number three.
Which is striking and shall be coterminous with the annual Board of Trustees' elections in a number of years.
If everything's all right. I don't have my computer for a word search. And also in two sixteen thirty, A two.
Okay, that's the one I'm looking at, is A two.
And then in three. I think those are the only two places.
I think in three, you could leave in that the liaison actually should continue to be coterminous. So...
Sure. So, it's just two.
Yeah. Just need to strike the language from two sixteen thirty-eight, two.
Okay.
Feel like you got it, Tom?
I, so all I need to do is just add what language we're striking from the ordinance, correct? Okay, perfect. I do. So, give me one second. All right. I'd like to move that we approve ordinance number ten dash twenty twenty-two, in ordinance of the town of Wellington establishing the Wellington Finance Committee as a formal advisory board to Board Trustees with the amendment to section two dash sixteen dash thirty, A two. And we're going to strike the language and shall be coterminous with the annual Board of Trustees' election in April of even numbered years.
Second.
Can we get a roll call, please?
Trustee Kenny.
Yes.
Trustee Mason.
Yes.
Trustee Teetz.
Yes.
Trustee Wiegand.
Yes.
Trustee Gator.
Yes.
Mayor Patton McDonald.
Yes.
Mayor Shosse.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on now, we have the Board of Trustees' appointments to boards and commissions. I'll read the merle proclamation for the appointments. The Wellington Board of Trustees is privileged to share its members with various boards, commissions, and authorities, all of which serve the interests of the town and its citizens. In following certification of elected Board of Trustees members in conjunction with the twenty twenty-two regular municipal election, I, the mayor, have conferred with the Board of Trustees regarding the assignment of membership to serve as Board and Commission Liaisons and Appointees. And the power of the appointments of the Board of Trustees members to board and commission positions is vested in I, the mayor. So, therefore, I, Kayla Shosse, Mayor of the town of Wellington, Colorado, have conferred with my fellow board members and being fully advised, hereby proclaim the following Board and Commission Appointees: Community Activities Commission Liaison Sherrell Teetz, Parks and Recreation Advisory Board Liaison Rebecca Kenny, Wellington Housing Authority Appointee Taylor Shosse, Behavioral Health Policy Council Appointee Dave Wiegand, and the alternate is Brian Mason. Colorado Municipal League Policy Committee Appointees will be Patty Garcia and the alternate will be Kelly Hodeling. And the North Front Range Regional Solid Waste Policy Council Appointees will be Rebecca Kenny with an alternate as Ashley McDonald. And then the Wellington Finance Committee will be John Gator. Next, we have ordinance eleven twenty twenty-two, in ordinance amending the twenty twenty-two adopted budget. Ms. Rumpel.
Yes, talk loud.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I read my resume. You see, I have actually have a master's in technology. I really do. Don't even ask. Thank you. So, what a municipality does every year is has to adjust the budget. The budget, the budget is adopted.
Are you looking to share your screen?
I am.
Does she? Cool.
Thank you. So, what I, Ms. Patty has to do is adopt the budget in November, early December of one year, and a lot of changes happen because those budgets are actually put together, you know, August and September. So, there's a lot that goes on for six months or a little bit longer, eight months, that we are doing right now. And it's important to keep your budget up to date in the financial system so we can look to budget to actuals and see what's happening. There are two kinds of things or three kinds of things that change over time. One is you have to do what is often referred to as a carryover or a carry-forward or a rollover. Either of those terms usually are changed. And that are, those are things that did not, that were committed in twenty-one, promised that we would do them, and often legally committed. And what we have to do then is bring them into, but they didn't, the bills didn't come in or the product didn't come in, and we can't pay it until we actually get the services and/or the product. So, we have made the commitment, but we cannot pay it until we receive it. So, we have to roll it into the next year. So, in this case, twenty-one and twenty-two. And we have three of those this evening. The other thing that you have is when we relook at our budget, we relook at our workload, and we say what can and what cannot be accomplished now with the other changes that are happening. Particularly, this is true in the utilities this year. Now that we have two very significant projects, we looked at what can we do, what can we not do, just in terms of workload. And so, let's just put that money, let's take it off the budget, put it back into the budget. The money doesn't go away. The authority, I mean, the authority stops, but we also don't, we don't take that money and do anything else with it. It just falls into what is known as fund balance. We have several of those this evening. Then, the other thing is anything that the board wants, you know, wants to do after the budget was adopted. And the major thing that this board did, I'm sorry, the former board, the town board did, was after the budget was adopted, the board said, we would like to transfer monies from the general fund to the two utilities, to the wastewater utility and the water utility. And we want to document that as fast as we can. And I will, thank you. And I will put that in the budget and document it. And then the Finance Department will make it, you know, working together. We probably, what they usually do is they do it either quarterly, divided up into quarter payments, or monthly payments. It's a lot of work. I prefer quarterly just for workload, to be honest with you, just particularly right now. So, those are the three kinds of budget adjustments that you do at the first of the year. And this would be considered the first year. Just to let you know, for those of you who are new, you will also have a cleanup ordinance at the end of the year. And there shouldn't be any surprises in that, okay? We will tell you if there are. But there are things like, oh, we got two more grants. And, you know, so we would not, some cities bring those up in ordinances every time you get one. Most towns like this size, you do them at the end of the year. It's called cleanup. And so, you appropriate those monies. And grants are the big issue, to be honest with you. Those are the major changes that they clean up. And if there's something, I don't know, it's mostly grants. So, that's what we're doing this evening is... and that's what we're doing. So the first three carryovers that we talked about is, are and by what we're changing here, but were the first three carryovers, I'm sorry, were a nine thousand dollars, I can remember the amount. Oh, was to bring over nine thousand dollars for the the RRA ERP for the water fund. And that's on page three of your document, or I guess it's forty-one. And that is that what we did is we had Jacobs do a risk resiliency work. And they did not, and this is normal for Jacobs, they got it finished, but they didn't, they didn't invoice us before the end of the year. So now they've invoiced us, they did the work, we need to pay them. Another one is the water efficiency program, which was to purchase meters. The meters were purchased, supply chain issues, and therefore, we didn't get them, we can't pay you, they came in in April, now we have to pay. And the third one is a wastewater truck that was, again, ordered, didn't arrive, so we committed the money, we now need to pay. So those are your three carryovers, if you will. The other major change, as we talked to some moment ago, was in February, on February fifteen, the former board increased the budget to transfer money from the water and waste, or from the general fund to water and wastewater as just a, as a contribution from the general fund to, and that was for one thousand, one million and forty-three thousand dollars. Well, we told the board at the time, and these are the changes, that we would reduce these projects to find that money, so that we can do that. And what happens is the CIP, the general fund gives money to CIP, we're cutting the CIP, so we can actually transfer it through the water fund. So it's a multiple things that we do there. And those projects included the T-bar parking lot, we said that we were going to do some work there, we now eliminated that. The point-to-point wireless project, we said we'd eliminate that. And Old Town Street repairs and the reduction to the RC project, they came in under budget. And so, we have that money, we'll spread it around to things for the general fund. The other, so then we went into the general, we went into the CIP for workload issues. And we said, what issue, you know, now it's four months into the year, what things are we going to get done and what things are we not going to get done? And what the staff came and said were things, again, we already counted the first three, the T-bar, the point-to-point, the Old Town Street repairs. We said, well, because of workload, we're not going to get the payment study done in the street, in the street fund. And so, the CIP, the street fund CIP, so we're going to eliminate that, that money will go back into the street fund right now. We have no plans to do anything else with that money, so it just goes into the fund balance for future years. And the epoxy street improvements, again, forty thousand, we're not, again, just workload. And so, we're going to, again, it'll just fall into fund balance. No other, no other actions need to be taken in terms of what are we going to do with the money. And then we have a series of utility changes that we're recommending, and these are things listed here. The water distribution system master plan, the water distribution improvements, the water pre-treatment, I don't know what that project is, but there it is. The wastewater risk, the wastewater risk resilience assessment. And then two, two changes to the drainage fund that are partners, if you will, with the Old Street Street Repairs. So, if you're not going to do that project, then you now need to do the drain pan replacements and the old and other drainage replacements. So those are kind of the areas. So we're, so we're recommending that we eliminate those, again, the money just goes into the fund balance. The other major change that we have is that with the debt service, we are recommending that we increase the debt service for the twenty twenty-two bonds for six hundred sixty-seven thousand dollars. And, but, we get to decrease the two thousand and two and the twenty fourteen debt service payments that was budgeted. But, but we are defeating all the debt, so we don't have to make those payments. But we do have to transfer two million dollars to the bank trustee, a bank trustee. And they hold the money until, well, they make the payments, and then in twenty twenty-four, they will actually retire the debt. So, but we have to make that appropriation to actually pay the bank trustee to hold the money. So that was a major issue there. All these other things that, because of governmental accounting, we often have to do things several times, so those ones, and then he comes back. And so, that's what a lot of these actions are. And so, I'm always embarrassed by that, but I need your approval to do all those adjustments. The three possible actions you have tonight are, you can adopt the ordinance as it's been presented with the changes. You can change the ordinance to include or exclude any of the recommendations that are in here. Or you can review, or you can just choose to review the ordinance for a couple more weeks. There's no major timeline on this. That was a question I've often had, is does this have to be done? Some cities don't do this until July. So it's just a preference, you know, I like to get things done. So, that's your choices tonight, and that's all I have. Thank you, thank you very much.
So, overall, it looks good, I appreciate you bringing everything to us early. I know I did submit some questions, I believe most of those have been answered. The ones that I feel I would like more time on is the proposed reducing of the drainage and the Old Town Street projects. I feel if we're going, I understand the concerns about staff load, but if that's something, something we hear a lot, it's about the roads. And so if we're going to be putting off doing that, I think that there needs to be more of a discussion on that. So just my request would be, if we're, I'm comfortable passing everything else on here, I have no issue with anything else. But I'd like to see us maybe pull those ones off, I'm not saying we can't do them, but let's at least have a discussion with staff, and then we can decide whether or not we feel that we're okay with those not being done. Other than that, I have no issues with it.
So, I did not talk on before this meeting, but those are highlighted. When I did my canvassing running for this position, the number one complaint was infrastructure and roads and water. I really feel that we need to address some of the Old Town Street repairs. I think it's imperative, just if you've walked along the streets that crumbling in areas. So I am in agreement that having that section pulled out and saved for future discussion. But also the epoxy street improvements, so the striping that they're talking about, there's not a lot of streets in Wellington that actually have the striping. So I would like to at least just explore what this looks like and what areas they were discussing doing. Because that's a safety thing. So, I think other than that, that was the only things that I had highlighted that I'd like to bring back.
I don't know if Mr. Gowing would want to speak to any of this at this time, or would you like to set up a separate time?
Welcome back.
I'm not really over here to say, it might be better to discuss this later.
Okay, and that's.
Certainly could now, if you'd like.
It's up to the mayor.
I say we discuss it in a later day.
Okay.
Okay. Yep.
Just those two, yeah.
Yeah, Old Town Street and then the drainage, obviously, and epoxy, I think.
The epoxy striping, yeah.
So maybe it would be better to just table it until the next meeting? I don't want to get that way it's a clean ordinance.
I'm fine with that, the only question I have for Vic, I know you said we don't have to, so the defeason, the defeating, the sewer, the only question I had, because I know there's a timeline behind getting that piece done. So we need to do at least the defeasons portion, because I don't, I know we've got a crazy work session next week, so I don't think we're going to have time to get to this. So, that's my only concern, is I know the defeating portion. So I, if we want to just do that and bring all the other stuff back, I'm good with it. Or if we just want to pull a concern one, I'm good either way. I just want to make sure we aren't running into a timeline.
We have a bit of a timeline on there. It's I, if the board does not have any problems with that, you know, that, that might, that might just be an action that we do. But we certainly, I mean, that happens, you know, sometimes you do different actions, you know, they things that you know that you're okay with, you know, things like that. So that is okay with you. How, good point, though, very good point, I would not want this to go till, you know, July, with that, with that, I don't know. For others, not this year, but next year.
Would you feel comfortable, Mayor Proton, if we adjusted the defeasons, just so we can have that part clear and then bring all the rest of it back? That way we can have a clean ordinance, so we can discuss all of it?
I think we need to figure out the, I want to take a couple of, want to take a couple minutes to look at this ordinance to figure out the best way to single that part out. The streets issues that Bob was talking about, are those all within the streets fund? I guess I'm wondering, do you want to just do the wastewater fund portion of this, or would you like to do all of this except the portions?
Right, yeah, would be those two, and also the paving study, it was on that deferment list.
Was that in the streets fund?
Yeah, all three of those are in the street.
Was the drainage, I think one, the drainage was attached to that streets project?
Yeah, we do that work with the Old Town Street project, one contractor per street project.
So, I mean, taking this out of the budget for the streets and whatnot, and due to the workload, even if we make these changes, will those be able to get done this year due to the workload?
Well, that's a good question, so maybe I do need to say. Usually we start those projects in February or April to kind of get ready. We want to get in there early to get a lock on a good contractor when they're still hungry, not in the middle of summer when they're not so hungry. So in general, we really prefer to be ready to bid this thing last month or even this month. So, not having worked on it with the intention that we defer it till next year, not delete it, defer it. That's going to be a challenge, yeah. So it wasn't just workload, it was kind of that whole discussion about the general fund, and this is obviously coming from the general fund. And we kind of left all that discussion with the understanding that those kind of need to be deferred to allow for that transfer. And because of that, we weren't working on it, and so, that is a bit of a concern.
Do we have enough money in the budget right now to cover just the normal maintenance?
Yes.
So, again, even if we deferred it till next year, we can at least get a load semi up to par?
This is primarily a maintenance program. It's called Old Town Street Repair or Rehabilitation, it has several names. But it's basically to repair the paving and the curving gutters sidewalk throughout the Old Town area.
But as far as filling potholes and stuff like that?
Oh, sure, potholes, we do that in our operating budget. So this is kind of a set series of projects kind of scattered throughout Old Town. You've probably seen it in the past, where we go into curving gutter and the streets are torn up. So, more of a bigger.
That's a major.
Yeah, so we, all things like sign, repair, replacement, pottles, emergency concrete repairs, those all happen through our operating budget.
Just a clarification question for Bob, Mr. Gowing. With the work that has already been done, I know we put in new sidewalks right outside here, a portion of that has not been finished. Would any of that bumping this out, would that affect us being able to finish the work that we'd already started?
Well, all the, the entire project for twenty twenty-one was completed. So that project looks like it's not completed, because it's kind of a hopscotch type approach. It's not the kind of project where we kind of replace the whole street. We replace the most broken up pieces of sidewalk.
Got it, so sorry, Ms. Garcia knows what, there's a spot where the yards are like inches above the sidewalk and it's
It's across the street.
Oh, it's right across the street.
Jim and I talked about that.
We're still working on that a little bit.
Is us not, is us taking this away going to affect the ability to finish that?
No.
Okay, I just want to make sure that we're not going to
I do have a question. Say we were to receive a grant or required previously budgeted funds for the matching. If we were to strike these items from these funds, will we still be able to qualify and say that we have those budgeted matching ones for those projects?
These particular projects don't have any matching, don't have any grant applications attached to them, if that answers the question.
Yes, yes.
The projects you're thinking about are another couple of projects in the street. We're still looking forward to those.
Perfect.
Thank you. And what, I apologize, what, what projects are those that are being discussed?
The Main Street project that's shown in, in the this year's budget. It's the kind of the Main Street rehabilitation, but reconstruction, re-striping, kind of changing the hardscape along Main Street in the Old Town area primarily. Would be addressed as well, we hope to address the drainage on Main Street, which is horrible, as everybody in town knows. And that's what we're calling the, I believe that's called the Cleveland Avenue improvements in the budget. So we applied for the, kind of the big
Revitalizing Main Street?
Revitalizing Main Street.
Revitalizing Main Street grant. And we were turned down with the first application, I don't know if you guys remember that. But we persisted and they said, and actually they came up with more money, so we applied for a second round. And that one is looking pretty good, in fact, it looks like we may get that grant, but we're not quite there yet. So we're not ready to kind of announce that officially. And if we do, that would look like something like the two million dollar project that we have shown in the budget.
But we do have other residents down town that can't even navigate sidewalks safely because of how raised and broken they are.
And most of those, if we can address it by grinding that lip off and things like that, we do it, you know, within the operational budget. The Old Town Streets project is more like we need to replace thirty feet of concrete or the curving gutters not flowing correctly. You've seen the busted up pans occasionally, the cross pans on streets, things like that get thrown into the Old Town Street project. So, kind of bigger, discreet projects, but things that are a little bit beyond our operations to accomplish.
Are there any comments from the public regarding this agenda?
I have a question for Bob, does that, the change is called Old Town revitalization? And that's for the sidewalks for Old Town area? Does that include ADA? So you can, want to share out the ramps that are going to be in place, are those going to be installed as well? Sure, I'm sorry.
It's habit, it's habit.
By saying, yes, whenever we touch a street in a major way, we're required to address the handicap access stuff. And we, so ramps in Old Town, a lot of ramps are not really in good shape.
Yeah.
So that's a big part of the project, is replacing those as we need to, relative to the rehabilitation of the streets. It's primarily a street rehab project, but curving gutter and ramps get pulled into that sometimes. Part of the project.
I appreciate that, there's just so many that are, there's some that are just really, really hard to navigate, so that's why I'm asking, thank you.
Hello, I would just like to say as an asphalt, as an asphalt guy and someone who does line striping, last year the mayor asked me to put a bid together to re-strike the fire lines, which he said that they didn't have in the budget, so I actually never did that, but I did measure everything and I do have the numbers for that. And as a contractor, my concern is always safety. So you cannot see where a fire line starts and stops in some areas, and if a car's parked there when a fire shows up, they'll easily push it out of the way, but it takes time and very valuable time that, you know, could be needed to rescue people or do things of that nature. I understand, I put in bids all day long, and pavement and asphalt and striping is always the last item on the budget, but it the last item on the budget, but it is, it is a safety concern.
I just want to say that I've heard the same concerns from residents. I live downtown and they want better lighting so they can walk at night as well as, um, sidewalks that, um, they don't trip on. And so even though it's late in the game, I'm sure we can find someone who's willing to do it and I just think it would be a good, um, look for you guys to the community because this is a big issue that community members are talking about, so I just.
All right, I apologize if you know it's not recorded, Lisa Cholay, we're on the east side of the highway.
Thank you.
I don't live downtown. However, all these things are very valid about sidewalks and roads and all that. But as a resident of this town and what brought me to these meetings to begin with is to implore financial responsibility, this is not the time to seek contractors for work that's primarily done at this time. Our town will pay more money than we would if we planned and have set this aside till next year. Does it feel bad to do that? Absolutely, right? But right now we have $80 million in projects, we're trying not to raise people's water and sewer rates. It is counterintuitive to go and worry about something that can be maintained till next year, when we can do it the right way and spend our money to get the most from every single dollar. If you do that this year, we're going to pay more than we should and that is the most irresponsible thing you guys can do and I don't think that is a good look on you rather than, you know, a nice sidewalk this week, right? So that's all I have to say.
Can I ask you another question, please? Oh, sorry.
It, does the public have any comment on any other part of that ordinance other than just the streets?
Um, so, and this is more of a legal question because this is one of my questions, is legality involving the sidewalks? If someone trips and falls on mismanaged, non-maintained sidewalks, what is our legal liability in that?
That is a really broad question in terms of, so it's hard to give an exact answer there, but the city for, or city, town of Wellington, um, is covered under the Colorado Governmental Immunity Act, so there's, there's a lot of considerations there. Certainly we want safe streets, but, um, I don't know that I can give a, the exact answer with such a broad question.
Got it, so I'll try and un-broaden it. So someone's walking down a sidewalk in the town of Wellington and the sidewalks are not maintained, they trip on the sidewalk. Is it our responsibility when, if we get, can we get?
Even with the, even with the, it's. It's habit, like I would shove it away and break it out. Um, even with that hypothetical, we might have, talking about a sidewalk that's wholly owned by the town of Wellington, we might be talking about a sidewalk that's in an easement on a right of way, we might be talking about, there, there's so many different factors that, I, I just don't know that there's a, there's an answer that I can give you that would provide any clarity to your question. Safe sidewalks are a concern for the town of Wellington and it's something we want to ensure, but.
But come to the same thing.
Yeah.
It's maybe a little bit of relevant information. The town code actually puts the requirement for maintenance for sidewalks on the adjacent property owner. It's not actually the town's responsibility to maintain sidewalks. That's the way it is in every community I've ever worked. I personally have had to replace my own sidewalk and I didn't care for it one bit, but I did it anyway because it was in the town code or the city code in that case. So, um, frankly, I think the answer to your question is that liability may actually lie with the property owner more so than the town because they're responsible for maintenance.
And that's exactly right, but it would depend on a lot of factors.
So say the town of Wellington owns the sidewalk.
I don't know which sidewalks the town would own that we're talking about here.
Well, that's what I'm just trying to figure out, is the legality, um, if someone does fall on a property owned by town of Wellington and harms themselves, does that leave us open for a lawsuit? That's what I'm trying to figure out.
Been my experience that you can always get sued for something.
I think in that case, the Colorado Governmental Immunity Act would provide a large defense for the town of Wellington.
Sidewalks are always super tricky. I mean, because there's a balance between what is government responsibility and what is private property rights. So once that improvement goes in, you know, there's that difficult argument of why the improvement went there in the first place. And then the, you know, homeownership, walkability, those are all important factors that plan to property value. So sidewalks, that conversation sucks as much as it does talking about water bills because private property rights, public safety, sidewalks are a can of worms that can become very, very contentious very quickly. So I hear your concerns about trying to understand the legal responsibility and I understand what Mr. Sapienza is saying, that it really depends on when, where, and the circumstances involved. So I think that when we talk about that sidewalk project, it's a much deeper conversation that could be headed with security.
I'd say let's, let's wait on that, discuss it later, as far as streets go.
Yeah, um, I think, I, I'm a resident of Old Town and I will in no way defend the quality of the sidewalks because this is really in front of my house, so I'm not. But I want to say that that is important, safety, accessibility is important. I think a little background knowledge would be helpful in that the reason why, not the sole reason, but a, a consideration for deferring projects, not canceling them, but deferring them till later, was to prioritize not having to raise water and sewer rates. The reason why major, major important projects were deferred, only CIP projects that you see essentially in here, was to give us the potential of transferring those general fund dollars into those water and sewer funds. Because it was determined at that time that not increasing water rates and sewer rates was our top priority. That's why those projects were deferred, not because they're not important, not because they're not needed. And all of those projects that we mentioned, a lot of them go in tandem. You can't just do one and knock the others. You can't do, you can't do all the street projects without first doing the plan as to what needs to be done. So these are not unimportant. They were pushed to another year for the budget concerns of this previous year, for the priority of water and sewer rates and not having to increase them as much as we would have had to otherwise. So I wanted to provide that background. With that said, too, with the potential of a grant that we are looking at, that's going to include a lot of the features and functions that, that you guys were talking about, ADA accessibility on, on Main Street, um, drainage on Main Street, all these kind of things. In my mind, if we were to move forward on these projects that were then also covered by free money, it wouldn't do justice to the people of Wellington to spend money that otherwise would have been granted to us to do the similar work. So I, I wanted to provide that background. We do need more talks on this, but when I said nothing surprised me, it was because we had made a decision, the community spoke and said they wanted to prioritize not increasing rates. So I wanted to give more context to the why I'm not surprised seeing any of these items.
Uh, Mr. Gowing, do you, do you, can you give us any kind of timeline as far as that grant goes? When, when are we looking at to, to know on that?
Maybe two weeks.
Okay, great. It works good right now. You never know.
We're, we're, we're hoping, we're hoping for good news in about two weeks, maybe less.
Let's say one more quick thing about that workload question that came up earlier. If we do get this Main Street grant, that's going to be a lot of work for staff to manage that project. That's going to be different than the project that we kind of landed out at the, the Highway One curve. We'll be kind of leading the charge on this one. So that was kind of in our mind as well, when we put that in there in the budget for this year, you know, we, we weren't really as sure now that we would get that. The other thing that we've done recently is taken some of the people, one person in particular, who managed this Old Town Streets project in years past and added some workload onto his plate to bring down some of the cost on the water and sewer plans. In particular, the RPR work that we'll be, we'll be kind of discussing this week and next week with you guys. So it is a bigger concern. The workload question is kind of more relevant to this one than any of the other projects on here, to be honest.
So my preference would be to have more time to go through, um, the road ones. There's been a lot of information provided by staff that as much as I might like to see that go forward, we might not be able to. I also want to be cognizant of the need to get the, the defeasance portion done. So my preference would be to hold on the, the transportation ones, revisit those and then, not say we don't do that, but not do that right now. But if this board really feels that we need to just move forward with all of it, I would not be opposed, but my preference would be that we do the ones needed to get the, the sewer debt going and hold on the transportation stuff, but I'm willing to work with the board on either direction. There have been several good points brought up on both sides, which I'd like to discuss more.
Yeah, it sounds like Damon made up together something to speak of postponing?
Well, if the goal was to simply, simply, um, only to postpone the items related to streets and drainage, I might suggest adopting ordinance 11-2022 with an amendment to strike the adjustments related to the streets fund and the drainage fund. And so then that way, um, we can move ahead with the amended budget as needed for the defeasance and the other items that seem non-controversial, leaving the streets fund and the drainage fund items unresolved. So move it to amend just for the, just to strike out those two. That'd be, that would be an option, I think that would do what you, what's been discussed here.
And the average total amount with the defe, uh, defeasance, uh, does that factor in the money from the, the roadwork and such? Can we still do it? So that's completely different.
It's completely utility, it's completely wastewater utility.
Okay, cool.
Might I recommend them that we approve it with the exception of the CIP items?
Just hold all the CIP items?
Have the card on the funds. Do the funds.
Be, because the CIP items are in different funds, I think it'd be, the, the cleanest way is to target the individual funds that you'd like to not do. And that's why streets and drainage include almost, include all the ones that have been discussed. And that way it's, you're approving all the fund transfers except those funds. It's the cleanest way.
Thank you.
Mr. O'Callaghan, I have one final question for you. In the beginning of the presentation, you said that there's generally three budget amendments done during the year. You mentioned the first one, you mentioned the last one. I'm sure that in your mind, you're a proactive planner and kind of have in mind when you're going to bring the next budget amendment potentially?
I would do it late August or early September. That's, I mean, it, it kind of depends on the board, and I mean that in a good way. I've worked for boards that only want two, I've worked with boards that want three, I work for boards that want, you know, one every week. Not recommend that. No, I'm not, I mean, they want the budget completely, you know, it's like, but, um, you know, I, I mean, again, I, I, I would bring one in late August, so generally, particularly with the budget, it'd be like, okay, there is a 22 budget, you know? And at that point, we should also know most of the changes that are going to happen in your cleanup ordinance, but, um, you know, you always need that little, a little at the end, yeah. So it would be with the budget in September, October, or, I mean, Sep, August is when we do it.
Okay, thank you. I was sure that you were already projecting later this year.
Yeah, yeah. A lot of words for the night.
So, well, public, we did public comment? You did it, you did it.
I'm not telling him public comment.
I was going to give, give it a shot.
Yes, that's right, it was on the streets.
I will see how this goes. I, I would like to make a motion that the board approves ordinance 11-2022 in ordinance amending the 2022 adopted budget with an amendment that we strike the line items for the streets fund and the drainage funds.
Second.
Trustee Mason?
Yes.
Trustee Teetz?
Yes.
Trustee Wigan?
Yes.
Trustee Gator?
Yes.
Trustee Kenny?
Yes.
Mayor Protem McDonald?
Yes.
Mayor Shosi?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
All right, moving on, we have a lease agreement for the water treatment plant expansion.
Good evening, Mayor and trustees, I won't pull the microphone down. The one person who remembered. I am here tonight to, um, to present, um, a lease agreement between the town of Wellington and North Pooter Irrigation Company, but first I want to turn it over to, um, Mr. Sapienza to say a few words, um, related to legal stuff.
Legal stuff. With a lease agreement like this, if you have particular questions about specific provisions of the lease agreement, it may be necessary that we retire, that the board adjourn into an executive session for purposes of receiving legal advice. To the extent that we can, we'll answer, I definitely will try to answer questions in a way that we can avoid that, because I think it'd be easier for everybody since we don't have an executive session planned at the end of the, at the end of the agenda. It'd be in the middle of the agenda, so everybody would have to, to leave. So we'll try and answer questions where possible, but if certain questions come up that, um, potentially require an executive session, I'll, I'll flag that and let you know. We'll probably try and do that the best way possible so that we can not have to go into executive session, come back and then go back, so. So other than that, Paula, back to me again.
Great, um, I do just want to cover a little bit of background first for you and for the public who's, well, not listening, but for those that are here. The town currently leases from North Pooter Irrigation somebody, company, something, company, the site of a water treatment plant. As part of the 19, what's kind of known as the 1983 agreement, which is, um, from 1983 between the town and North Pooter, that has several provisions, that does include language around leasing that property that identifies those 5.23 acres. In part of the effort, as we were scoping the design project for the expansion for the water treatment facility, it was identified we would need a larger footprint area. We began conversations with North Pooter, uh, really in the spring of last year, 2021, um, to, to start conversations about expanding the area that we're leasing from them through that 83 agreement. It was discussed at that time to, uh, that it would be in the best interest of the town, both with the company and the town grid, for the town of Wellington to purchase that, that property, both the existing lease area that we, uh, currently lease from them, as well as this expanded area that would be needed for the expansion effort. We then went out, solicited, um, um, a quote, not a quote, an appraisal for that property in summer. We have been in active negotiations with North Pooter, um, with North Pooter for the last several months. However, we have gotten to a point where with the progress of the water treatment, uh, facility expansion effort that is looking to break ground now, or yesterday, for lack of a better term, um, we do need to get a lease agreement in place as we continue to finalize those negotiations with, with North Pooter. That's both to the benefit of the town as well as to the benefit of the company to do that. There are a couple of provisions that were outlined, um, in the memo and the packet that are also defined in the lease agreement, uh, just related to kind of release of a, of a, of an easement that had been identified in the 1983 agreement, that we have negotiated with them to come, uh, to provide them access to property to the west of the water treatment facility, including to the west of the expanded area through different means. And to, to, to date, they have agreed with that. Now this lease further goes to their board, they have their board meetings on the first to second Wednesday, so it'll be tomorrow morning. So the ask here would be that, uh, we are able to get, um, your approval to then sign the lease after they have also approved it with their board, assuming those substantive adjustments or changes are directed by their board. So at that point, really, I'm here to field questions for you, if you have any. I have, um, it looks acceptable to me.
Uh, no, my questions mainly came initially, so just to be clear, it's the 250 a month is the lease. And then as a part of the agreement, we are, um, they're going to be releasing the easement And then as a part of the agreement, we are, they're going to be releasing the easement on the north of the property to allow us to put our fencing up, and then we are going to be building a dirt, a gravel road leave south and west of our property on their property. Then once we build it, we're done. We don't touch it ever again. It's all theirs. We have nothing to do with it, correct?
It's currently defined.
As currently defined, okay. No, everything looks good to me. And then this is again focused on, it's a lease until September or we purchase the property, whichever comes first, and then it continues monthly if needed from there.
I should point out that the road that's to be built on North Pooter's property, south and to the west of the expansion site, is included in your packet. The depiction there is the proposed road, not the, not anything that's existed. So if you'd like an illustration of that, ask what that is.
I had all my questions answered.
No questions, let's get this thing going.
Okay. Any comments from the public regarding this? All right, any final comments from the board? Like, oh.
I do. It's a positive. Megan and Bob, thank you so much for your hard work and diligence through this. It's taken a lot of patience and handled very delicately. So this is a very, very important piece for assuring our residents that we can maintain our water rates. So thank you so much for all of your hard work and for sticking through this. I'll say my prayers for tomorrow morning.
All right. With no further comments, I would like to seek a motion for a lease agreement of a water treatment plant expansion.
I'd like to make a motion?
Oh, there you go.
To, keep going?
Yeah, go.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the lease agreement for the water treatment plant expansion.
I'll second.
There was some suggested language in the packet.
With the suggested language, per the attorney. I'll still second. Thank you.
Thank you. The suggested language is because this has to go to the North Pooter Board tomorrow. And so, assuming that there's nothing substantive, so.
As presented.
Thank you.
Trustee Teetz?
Yes.
Trustee Wigan?
Yes.
Trustee Gator?
Yes.
Trustee Kenny?
Yes.
Trustee Mason?
Yes.
Mayor Protem McDonald?
Yes.
Mayor Shosse?
Yes.
Okay, now we are on to the Water Now MOU presentation.
Excuse me, one second. Since it was pulled from consent, I'm going to give you a PowerPoint presentation that you can follow.
Oh, I got two. Would you like, somebody out there like one? Pass it around, sorry.
Toss up.
Good evening, we are board of trustees. So tonight, I just wanted to give a general overview of what the Project Accelerator grant is and the intention behind it. I'm going to speak some public comments over the weekend and some questions from the trustees. So we just figured if we put it all together in a presentation, I might make it easier. So first and foremost, the grant itself is not a grant with financial considerations. It is for two hundred and fifty hours of professional services provided by the Water Now Alliance. It amounts to about twenty-five thousand dollars if you consider the cost of their services. However, the town will not receive any money for this grant. There is also no match requirement from the town to provide any financing for the professional services. The grant itself is a six-phase approach over six months, that six months is a very strong deadline. And the goal of this grant would be to develop a communication strategy for the already existing water efficiency practices in place of the Town of Wellington. This would look like stakeholder engagement meetings. This would look like surveys, draft feedback, things like that. We want to know how residents prefer information, goals that they would like to set or would be substantial for them. So would you prefer us to focus on individual savings? We want to save this much individually per week? Or would you prefer that to look like the whole community? We're trying to save every, all residents together, we're trying to save as a town, this amount of water for the whole month? Things like that. We also want to determine some best practices and preferences for some of our targeted stakeholders within the programming materials. And then the end goal would be to create a uniform campaign that can be recognizable for years to come. Three years down the road, when a resident sees our marketing materials for a water efficiency program, they know exactly what it is, they know what it means, and it's a habitual change in their mind. Timeline and intention, so staff applied for this grant in December of twenty twenty-one. We received the award note dated in January of twenty twenty-two. And then between February and today, we have been working on a project description that you see in your packet tonight. The intention of applying for this grant came from the twenty twenty-one strategic plan that was adopted by the board that sat here before you guys. It was goal number three under the community engagement pillar that outlined to develop a communication strategy for the town's water comprehensive plan. Conserv, sorry, the town's water conservation plan. We also have an adopted twenty eighteen municipal water efficiency plan that outlines education activities and outreach as a priority goal for water savings. I wanted to highlight some water savings data about why we highlight education and outreach. Education and outreach for water conservation is usually the most cost-effective form of water efficiency practices. Doesn't require infrastructure, doesn't require us to put meters in place, things like that. We can most of the time do it completely in-house in terms of marketing materials. And just wanted to outline what the savings looked like in our municipal water efficiency plan expectations as the Town of Wellington, and also provide some other data from surrounding communities that have education outreach as a priority within their plan as well. I know there was some concern about the out-of-state consultant for this project, the Water Now Alliance. I did want to highlight that several communities in Colorado have utilized the services of the Water Now Alliance, particularly for the Project Accelerator grant. For example, just down the road, the Town of Severance completed a project with them. And I was able to get in contact with the project manager at the Town of Severance right before this meeting, and they were able to accomplish the entire project with the Water Now Alliance within a hundred hours. So I know there was a concern about, are we going to go over the two hundred and fifty hours of professional services? Severance was really impressed. Just wanted to pass that along, that they were able to accomplish it in a hundred and four hours total. I did want to be really transparent. Obviously, every grant has pros and cons, so I really wanted to highlight those tonight. Town staff will be working alongside the Water Now Alliance on this project. A pro would be that town staff could dedicate their time to the engagement part of the Water Now, of the communications plan while Water Now would focus on the actual product development. If we weren't to do this grant with them, staff would be responsible for the product development as well. And then the communication strategy grant does not have a match. I know we had a question from one of our trustees regarding other funding, other opportunities to apply for grants, such as the one of the Water Conservation Board of Colorado. That is definitely a grant that we can look at. It does require a twenty-five percent match for consulting services on top of the additional cost for stakeholder meetings and things like that. And then the Water Now Alliance has a wide network of resources, experience, all those networking processes that we don't currently have as a town that we could utilize. And then just data in general for this overall communications plan can extend beyond the efficiency program. There are some cons, so looking at costs to host stakeholder meetings, if we did want interpretation services for the Spanish-speaking community, that comes at, oh boy. Is that your computer or my computer? It's not on my screen. You alt-tab? Thomas, the computer. It's not on mine. Before we last, all of the.
Talk fast, Hallie.
Okay, well, that's getting figured out. Two hundred dollars per two-hour meetings for an interpreter. The ideal goal would be that first meeting with the Spanish-speaking community, we would determine whether they would want engagement further in person or if they would prefer that engagement to be virtual or through paper copies, whatever that looks like. So that could vary between one meeting or six meetings, so two hundred dollars for a two-hour meeting could be two hundred dollars or twelve hundred dollars. Supplies, everything, it takes, it takes some money to put together a community meeting. That is definitely one. The six-month timeline is aggressive and robust, which means that it would be a priority for staff to accomplish this this summer within that timeline goal. And then we have, again, I wanted to mention again, we've heard community concerns about the out-of-state consultant. Wanted to put that on there as a con as well. I hope that that wasn't too long. I could stand for any questions from the board.
Yeah, actually, I've got two. I noticed that the Project Accelerator program that Water Now puts on is partially funded from a grant, but specifically from the Colorado Water Conservation Board. Do we happen to know if that grant is a pass-through grant from the state? And would it be counted towards paper revenue? And if so, is there any risk of paper excess revenue this year?
That is beyond my scope of.
I think in this case, because it's staff time, not even direct contribution, it would have no impact on the town and paper.
It's not money. We're not getting, we're not getting any money.
Understood, okay. One other question I had was, is there any state requirement that we have this educational outreach program part of our water efficiency program legally wise? Or I'm just curious, is, when we adopted the plan, was there any timeline put into place that we had to have this effort done?
When we did adopt the municipal water efficiency plan, there was a ten-year deadline on the, when we adopted it in twenty eighteen. I'm not sure of the ramifications of if we don't, no, okay, there are no ramifications if we don't achieve that, but it is outlined in our adopted plan that we would accomplish that in ten years.
Okay, that's, that's all I've got.
Yeah, okay, so first of all, throughout this last year, we had very clear direction to staff to chase all grant dollars. Get us the piece of the pie of the money that is available right now to represent Wellington and put us on the board. It's been proven over and over again, we've done extremely well with grants. And I want to applaud all the services from staff of giving us potentially millions of dollars of free money that go into our community. I think that is amazing. This opportunity with no matching requirement is not something we've seen yet. So I think this is an outstanding opportunity, and this hasn't come before us. Now, some comments on the presentation and some of the items that I've received as well from community feedback. I know there's a lot of concerns for certain programs and things, but I do want to give my perspective and point of view. First of all, from the perspective of a con, any kind of accommodations and accessibility that we're providing to our community to participate in engagement and have the opportunity for us to hear them, I would never consider that a con, and those costs are well worth it. Everybody in our community should be heard. Any opportunity we have to hear more from them on topics that they beg us to listen to them about, considering their water bills, how they, how, how they can make their lives more affordable. These are the things that we hear in everything that we hear from the community. Affordability is a problem. My water rates. Now, we have an opportunity to have a coordinated effort to listen, to survey, to hear our community, and then be able for that to be put into action at no cost to us outside of the few expenses that we're allotting before. I understand that follow-up costs or concerns, what if, what could happen? What I'm saying right now is this is a major opportunity. And the most feedback we have always gotten is I didn't know my water rates were going to go up. Nobody asked me, will this be equitable? Those are the major things that have happened, and this is our opportunity to learn more and for it to be coordinated through an effort of professionals to do this work. So congratulations for chasing these grant dollars, and I'm really, really glad this opportunity is coming up us right now.
Yeah, so I had several questions, and I appreciate staff working hard to get this presentation together and get answers out to the questions, but I did want, I don't think those answers were included in the packet, so I did want to go through some of those. So with this, I know one of the pieces of this is there is going to be staff time involved. What are we looking at in terms of the hours and potential costs of the staff time that would have to be put into this from our end?
I think the, the total that we estimated was about seventy hours in terms of attending stakeholder meetings, the marketing, developing marketing materials. That would vary between my time, Mahala, our marketing and communication specialist, Megan, our deputy public works director, and Kelly Hodeling, our deputy town administrator. Between the four of us, we'd kind of be taking on those roles of different hours. And then the actual product development would then be in the hands of the Water Now Alliance.
I believe there was an estimated number that you guys gave us, I think twenty-five hundred, was that the estimated cost of it? And then the, you covered the anticipated cost of translation services, and I agree with Trustee Kenny. At some, anytime we can reach out to the citizens, that's hugely important. The one thing that I, I look at things from a budget standpoint, I'm very concerned about, you know, we just talked about with these Old Town Street repairs, whether we pull out or not to make sure we have the money available to make these transfers and do a lot of other things. So my concern is, is even though it's small amounts, I've been a part of all the meetings that we've had with the Hispanic community, and they do want to be engaged, and there's a lot of different areas, being more involved in the events, being more involved in the governance. The issue is, is investing that funds, I would rather see those translations funds go into things like translating our applications for town boards or providing a translator to these meetings so members of the Hispanic community can come here and actually engage with us, even if they don't have a great grasp or they're more comfortable hearing things in Spanish versus putting into doing water efficiency, which is something that did not come up in any of, I mean, we've probably had five or six meetings with the community, and that's not been a topic in any of those discussions. So I prefer that if we're going to spend the money, let's focus on some of the other areas that they're asking us to actually help them in. It also, I have concerns with the company. It was very focused in on three population subgroups. I appreciate, and we do need to engage more with Hispanic community, but I don't like that it looks like they really need to focus in on these groups. There's a lot of other people in this town that don't fall into any of the groups there, and I kind of felt like we left those individuals out. I'm glad to hear. One of my major concerns is if they go over the hours. There's a lot of times like, well, we're already this far and we've got to finish it. It's great to hear that Severance was only about a hundred hours. That does help alleviate a little bit of those concerns. The other concern that I have really comes back to similar to what Bob was discussing with just with having staff focused on this. There are other projects and things that would be a part of the objectives that we set out within our plan for the next two years that we would be taking that time away from. They would not be able to focus on the priorities that we have set out because they would be focusing on this. So that's a concern that I have. I also got, I think we all got several emails from our residents who were very concerned about the company and whether that's really going to represent Wellington. And so I think that's something that we need to take into consideration. It's great that people want to give us money, but the question is, is the product that we're going to get out, is it going to match the character and things that are important to our town? And I think that there are a lot of concerns about it, that this might not do that. Those are kind of my thoughts at this moment.
Yes, so I did send in a list. It was, we discussed that that list was going to be released to the public, so if they have questions, they can also go back and reference that. I would say my, kind of mirroring what John has said. And adding to that, when I did the average at twenty-eight dollars an hour for an employee of our town, that's just base salary, we're looking at about seventy-nine hundred, so about eight thousand dollars in staff time, stuff like that, when you add in translators and whatnot. So that's a concern to me.
Can I get a, can I get an answer from staff on that?
So the number of hours, so the amount will be for staff time, staff only, about twenty-five hundred dollars. So translation services, things like that will be above and beyond that. That is not staff time. So it can't be, I would recommend not lumping that together. That needs to be separated.
Got it. So twenty-five hundred and then whatever the translators are.
Translation, right, if that's the direction, if translation services are requested.
Got it, so an additional is anywhere from two hundred to twelve hundred, is my understanding. So what concerns me is, is our HUG grant funds are completely expended. So the people in our town now that need help, there's no more money to apply for that help. So it's gone. I would much rather see twenty-five hundred dollars go to helping the one, people in our community now, than I would have the board, have the town staff come back to us next month and ask us to replenish those HUG funds on top of doing the twenty-five hundred dollars plus the twelve hundred.
Now, correct me, that would be based off of salary that's already for town staff? So it's not like we could pull that salary and put it into a HUG fund?
Correct, the HUG, the HUG money, and I will bring it up in my report, but I have built an idea on that through your discretionary fund. To replenish that, so.
I apologize for interrupting, but I have a question that's specific to the context of this question. So we're talking about twenty-five hundred dollars of staff time. Theoretically, if this grant wasn't available and we were expending just staff resources to execute this communication plan for conservation purposes, what would that cost?
You would tack on two-hundred-and-fifty hours, that was the project, the Water Now Alliance staff time onto town staff time. So, take the seventy hours that we expected and add the two-fifty.
And then potentially more because we're not as adequate at doing what they do?
It would take us, yeah, it would take us some time to get up to speed.
Thank you, I just wanted to add that up as well.
Got it, so that was the, the expenditures were a concern to me. Emails that we had received from our public, I didn't receive a single email for it. Every email that came flooding in through my email was, please don't spend more of our dollars hiring an out-of-state company to come in and tell Wellington what's best for Wellington. So I know that there are other ways to reach out, and so mailers sent home, it's been requested by multiple residents. We still don't do that, we did it with the water treatment, the rate increase. I did receive that mailer. But we honestly, I think it would benefit us best to actually ask our residents how they want to be reached. So that kind of, I think at the end of the day, Holly, when you were explaining it to me earlier, when we had had the discussion, you said that that's not your wheelhouse, is? When you're looking at putting it out there, finding out resident involvement, how they want to get connected. I would say that, at the end of the day, how do we find out unless we're not going out and asking? So, and I understand that a company, this company can assist with this, but it's in their phases, a lot of the stuff they list in their phases is a lot of stuff we already know. It's taking the, the information you gathered and putting it in a different presentation form is kind of what, and viewing all the phases, because I think there were six phases. And viewing all the phases, a lot of this information we already know. So I think that the utilization of staff time, I mean, when you look at it, our water conservation is already doing showerhead exchanges, the toilet tabs to test for leaky toilets, irrigation audits, classes, workshops, AMI metering. I mean, you guys are doing a decent job. I think what a lot of this comes down to is enforcement. So, when you look at it, I mean, in my subdivision, everybody's grasp was green during the restrictions last year. So, and I watched my neighbors water the sidewalk, and so water was constantly being used. I know when I had reached out to Windsor to ask them about this aspect of it, they said it didn't save them a dime. So I'm just trying to figure out how best to utilize staff time when we're headed into strategic planning and stuff like that. If the, we have two huge water plants getting ready to be built right now, on top of what we already hear is a very tax staff in general. I just don't know if this is a best fit for Wellington right now.
Questions I have. Are we spending any of the citizens' dollars for this minus-salary staff time?
If we were to do the interpretative?
If we were to go ahead with, with this, yeah. So the interpreter would be taxed for it already?
Yes.
Okay. This study basically is to help us know how people are best reached by doing the stakeholder events, correct?
It's, it's two parts. It's not only how they like to be engaged, but then transferring that information into actual physical programming. So not necessarily content, that is my wheelhouse. I can do the content side of things, that's what we've been doing for the past two years. But it's how to take the content and take how they want to be engaged and make it something that is effective and resonates with all residents in the town of Wellington, not just one group.
Okay. And then, I mean, this is more about helping people that don't know, right? Like, a lot of people know how to conserve water. Majority of us do, I would think. But there's plenty of people that literally don't know where to start. And so this would kind of give them that ground to be able to learn how they can kind of lower their bill if possible?
Yeah, and that came from, so I teach a water conservation class for our HUG recipients, the, the grant that, the utility grant. And it was something that came up to me of, from one of our residents that attended that, that class, that said, "I wish I would have known these things when I moved here." Like a welcome packet when I moved into the town that taught me these things. So I never got so far behind that I needed this grant in the first place. And so that kind of prompted the idea of, okay, we're not reaching everyone we thought we were reaching. How do we figure out who needs to be reached in the effective way to do that?
And then actually, Severance used this?
Yes, for a different, they used a communications toolkit in, in cohorts with their comprehensive plan. So it was a little bit different. Every, obviously every community's need is different. But they did use the Project Accelerator grant to accomplish that. They had the Water Now Alliance come in and basically put water efficiency practices in place and hold stakeholder meetings and figure out what people wanted to incorporate that in their comprehensive plan.
Did they have any feedback on how that helped or did not help?
They, I mean, they incorporated those, those comments into the comprehensive plan, and they had rave reviews about working with them. They only, they accomplished it within half the time they thought they would. So, that was the only community that was able to respond back to me in time. I did reach out to the other four, so I do hear from them, I can let you know.
All right, I guess it's time to open up for public comment.
I'd like to yield my three minutes to Brittany.
I don't, that's not a process we've established in the past.
What?
Yielding time to another, for a public comment? We've allowed three minutes, so it's your call, it's up to you. You're running the mayor, I'm just saying that it's not something we've talked about, and staff is unaware. But if that's the way you want to go, that's perfectly fine. We can set the timer for six minutes.
For six minutes, okay.
I'll restart it when it comes down.
Well, I spent a great deal of time reviewing Water Now Alliance, and my goal was to determine their intent and their mission. Do the results produce debt? Does Water Now have any federal or global interests? Their mission, from their website, and I quote, "Water Now is a catalyst for change and an architect for solutions. We identify and overcome barriers and provide tools and resources for our members to build local support for policies and programs to advance sustainable water management," end quote. Their goals from their website are to increase capacity to get sustainable equitable products off the ground. All of their goals, they say, aim to use programs to advance social equity and to foster climate resilience. The Water Now Alliance, they refer to the Project Accelerate as their vehicle to jumpstart sustainable water projects and policy. They research towns' existing policies and make recommendations to ensure equity and affordability, these are their words. They also facilitate connecting financing for your projects that they advise. Water Now's parent company is Multiplier. On their website, they make reference to the United Nations and the World Bank's Agenda 2030 in pushing forward for this agenda. They discuss receiving the new national policy guidance that unlocks large funding for green infrastructure. Water Now also spotlights connecting water management to public health through their tap into climate resilience, health, and equity benefits of localized GSI. GSI is Global Subsidies Initiative. Water Now recommends things like green roofs, permeable pavements, efficient water fixtures to help reduce heat in urban settings in the name of social equity. And they want to improve energy use to reduce fossil fuels, that is on their website. They say policy needs to be made early on in the building and remodeling and construction process to align with sustainable development. They also advise a health and all policy approach to align with state and government recommendations. When I researched GSI with the UN, their plan is to make the switch from fossil fuels to sustainable energy. The UN says that a dramatic transformation in energy is needed to achieve the results in the goals of the Paris Agreement and the Agenda 2030. They discuss using financing for local governments and how banks can work, and the World Bank to use as a catalyst to achieve on a local level their economic and social goals. The United Nations 2022 Economic and Social Council Forum was titled "Building Back Better from the Coronavirus Disease While Advancing the Full Implementation of 2030 Agenda for Sustainable Development." There are going to be many partisan groups, nonprofits, and businesses that attempt to offer solutions and innovative loans for sustainable development that come along with rules and regulations that align with 2030 Agenda. I find it concerning that the United Nations is offering loans and trying to advance into local projects while at the same time the value of our currency is falling. This seems to be the movement that Water Now pushes. They are a climate change activist group. They call all of their partners climate change activists, you can go to all their partner websites. They advise partisan policy, and citizens understand that there's a water issue here, and they're trusting a nonpartisan board to lead the solution accordingly. So, that's all I have to say.
Thank you for your research.
Brittany, did you put your info down?
Yeah. Hannah Misha from the Knowles. Given this grant, there's a few things, I know there's been, in the last couple of years that I've been attending town halls, there has been a consistent demand for communication and other forms of communication, and a lot of public feedback regarding preference towards education over water restrictions. So in a lot of ways, I think this grant does seem to get what people have been asking for by two sort of, well, and the third thing that I actually like is targeting HOAs. My HOA is a pain in the ass, and I'm getting really sick of them being on me about my private property. So anything that can put a leash on an HOA in my book is great. The, the other concerns that I would have is, like, is it actually going to tell us anything we don't already know? You know, can this be useful? And the third thing is, is this actually decent scientific help on water? Or is there something else? Because we do see that a lot, where, you know, after-school art programs are actually sex ed and all these things, where a lot of weird stuff gets packaged into something that it's not supposed to be. A lot of water conservation ends up being, get rid of your car and buy a Tesla. And just, God knows at this point what the actual content would be. So I would, you know, if this is improving communication and actually decent scientific and actionable items that goes from taking the communication to actually implementing, I think that's actually very, very positive, if this is indeed what it's being billed as. I, I think the, I remember on Let's Talk Wellington, someone asked, why isn't everyone out washing their cars today? That's all we did in Texas, and they just were outright ridiculed because everyone knows you don't waste water here. The difference between people who moved recently and the people who have lived here, and what they know, and the ability to implement that. So I think, I think those would be positive things. I would just have concerns, obviously, people from California can know things about water we don't. I don't mind people from California giving me good info. What I do mind is weird political stuff getting packaged into that. And I think that's something that I had written down before Brittany spoke. That's something that I think is a legitimate concern anytime you're dealing with outside groups. We had extensive feedback on the comprehensive plan about requiring companies to put in solar panels and all that stuff. So I don't think the general, like, environmental message is something that people are really interested in, but saving money on water bills is. So, depending on how that all comes out, I hope that the board can do due diligence to research and, and make that decision based on that.
Thank you.
Mayor Trustee Mario Quinones, Wellington Village. It's going to be a bit sporadic because I have quite a few notes. So it seems like we continue to take a top-down approach to issues that our town is facing. When we take a bottom-up approach, you reach out to the people that are most affected by the issues. I think we've already heard several times that people used to get information in their water bill. Everybody gets a water bill. Not everybody's on social media, this is not rocket science. We know how people can get the message. With the technology and the ease of access to information, it seems counterproductive to hire consultants to look for answers that are readily available. And as one of the trustees stated, we already know a lot of these things that are going to be the outcome of what this out-of-state company is going to come to the conclusion. Water conservation is better nowadays than it ever has been, primarily with water-saving faucets, toilets, and incentives for businesses and residents to upgrade to these types of fixtures. If the town staff is going to have to put in hours with this project, why not allot those hours to working with the community to make these types of things happen? One thing I'm not clear about, about the interpreter, are we looking for an interpreter that is going to interpret in Spanish? And what about Mandarin Chinese, sign language, and French? I think there's probably a couple or many other languages that I didn't include there. And then as far as grant dollars go, I, I think we said this is not a grant, and we don't get any money, so we're not thankful for this grant money because there's no money coming in. In fact, we're spending money on some things that we've already, over the past year. I know this has been a topic, came up with quite a few recommendations and alternatives to our water conservation. And networking, our town already does that, as we've heard from several of the town staff and even trustees have reached out to other municipalities and have found out what works for them. The last thing I would like to say is, according to their, to their website, this is the first year they've done this type of project. So, prior, in the past, they've done a regional or global type of survey, and this is the first year in Colorado that they're trying this new type of thing. So I don't think we're a flagship for any new type of program. And I would like to see what Severance actually did get from this. I know Greeley has worked with them as well. I, I just haven't done the research or found out exactly what, what became of that. Thank you.
I always have to ask them, Kelly, Hallie, Hallie, Kelly. My brain, I have to wait, I don't remember her name. So I would like to point out, when I was just at a meeting, the CAC meeting, and town staff, Kelly? No, Callie Cooper.
Callie, yes, Callie.
Callie Cooper made a comment about the, like, insignia they have for Fourth of July, and how we should keep using that year after year after year after year, because as Because as Hallie was saying, you want the person to see that in advertising and go, oh yeah, I know what that is. That's Fourth of July. Or I know what that is. That's water conservation or whatever the event is. And I would think it would not be hard to come up with an agreeable way of presenting that and having that, as was suggested on any of the social media platforms or QR code that you can scan and get the information. But if we had that same thing, and we talked about it earlier in the year, like in April before, you know, everybody gets heat in June and July and August. I already see these things happening. I've seen surveys put out by the Town of Wellington staff about different ways people want to vote on different types of things. And I, I'm really concerned that we have come to the podium, many towns members have come to the podium and said, we don't want outside consultants. We want to try to find that in town. And that's been like hammered to death. And I think this is the same thing is that why are we going to go, why are we going to have this outside company come in and then say, well, we think the best way for you to do this is this? Why aren't we not able to put out the surveys ourselves or the flyers or hold meetings like the town hall that we just had and invite every community? And I totally agree with the Spanish interpretation. That should be present and it should be put out to the Spanish community as well. I have neighbors and I go over and talk to them with no problem at all. Their children translate for me, which is wonderful. But I'd really like to see the board and the town do more reaching out themselves. We're always saying that we're about the people. We work for the people. I'd really like to see the town reach out to the community and actually get involved. I saw Mayor Shalcy at the Boys and Girls Club open house and that was really cool because I actually saw people just coming up and talking to him. And maybe it's people he'd never met before and people like people wouldn't come to this meeting. They feel intimidated, but they were able to go to him and that. And I see that also with the town hall. There's people that I've never seen in this meeting that attended the town hall and felt like they were comfortable enough to actually reach out to the trustees, have conversations they may not have with them normally. And it really felt so inclusive and it felt like it was personal. It felt like each one of you took the time to listen to the people and actually talk with them, what the points were. And so I would just encourage you as you're looking at this, these are things that we can do in our community and I'd really like to see it in our community with the board reach out and town reach out, staff reach out. We can do this here. We don't have to have an outside company do this. It's not that hard. Thank you.
You probably have my address memorized.
Her time started.
Okay, I'm Kathy White Alice, moved on with your report in viewpoint. And I was a bit appalled with this grant. And I, I did send an email to some of the trustees expressing why I was against it. And, and a lot of people have covered some of the reasons. You know, without town, it seems to be totally integrated with the big global climate change thing, which is, you know, climate change? Yeah. The climate's changed since the world came into existence. It's always going to change. But the, the global climate change is anthropomorphic. They think that, you know, we're all bad. Our carbon dioxide, I guess that we breathe out of our mouths, it comes out of our car, it's a pollutant. It's not a pollutant. It's plant food and we absolutely need. So I am totally against that sort of stuff as being a reason to, to change things in Wellington. And that's what I think this, there's going to be a foot in the door for a group that wants to do this. They're, they have a little page on their website where they were talking about their winners of their visa grants. And they said, you know, they described Wellington, called it bedroom community. Wellington has experienced unprecedented demands on its water resources and delivery systems. True, including those associated with increased water uses, residents shifted to working from home during the COVID-19 pandemic. Oh my, really? Well, they didn't flush in the toilet more or something? And I found out that they thought it was horrible. Well, I'm like, wow, I wonder what the weather was. June of 2020 was in the nineties in early June. August was the hottest August since 1895. That's why there was increased water use. It wasn't COVID and it wasn't that people didn't know. And then the water bill hadn't gone up yet. Didn't go up until November went up a little. And then I'm really worried about the whole equity part. That means people pay less or more based on whether you're in a victim group or in a group that somebody has decided it's not a victim group. And I just, Hallie had some good ideas already. I don't see why, you know, about people, you know, giving people something in their first water bill when they, when they come to, when, when they move to town. If we had stuff in the water bill, they would get it. And they would go, oh, look at all these things that I could be doing because my water bill is outrageous. So that is my, I'm really against this. I please, I really wish you would not allow this particular grant. There are strings attached that we can't see. So thank you.
I did go through a lot of trouble to look at their website and dig deep on it as the first speaker did. I was happy that there was something out there that was going to take the burden off the staff for getting things done for the town. Water conservation is a thing. It's a finite resource. We rail, we're running out of water. We can make our own. It's super expensive and very complicated. Environmental change is our thing. I believe in fossil fuel. I also believe in alternative energy. I think there's a common sense balance. I think that every person sitting here and the staff that works for this town, they're smart. They're not going to get caught up in a bunch of political stuff. There is politics running rampant in our town. I think everyone knows that and anybody that pretends that there isn't is lying to themselves and lying to everyone else. This does not need to be a political issue. This needs to be a way to communicate. You heard from a lot of people. This isn't very many people. A lot of people didn't even vote. There are almost 12,000 people that live in this town. People break the watering restrictions. People don't know who has nonpotable water and who doesn't, whether or not they should be conserving that water. There's a lot of communication that needs to get out there and we can't afford to hire a whole other staff person just for this. And that's what you're asking is you're asking the staff, if you don't take this grant, you're asking the staff to do their job and do over and above 250 to 320 hours more work or more. You're, you're adding to their plate and this is important. People don't know. People didn't know there was an election. People don't know when there's a lot of things going on in this town or communication sucks. And you guys are smart. You don't have to get caught up in all the political stuff that goes along with any company you deal with. Every company is going to have a political angle because there's an owner of every company and an owner has personal beliefs. I'm sure John runs his business a certain way based off of his beliefs, as do I, right? And there's a million owners out there. So don't, just don't fall into all this crap. Like we just, we need to take advantage of the opportunities that present themselves, save us money and better our community and get us in contact with the people that are in this crap. That's all I have to say.
I'm not crap.
I didn't say you were crap. I said the crap that the company's about.
Thank you all for your comments, everyone here. Are there any more comments from the board? And I'll start with trustee Mason.
Oh, in the hot seat. So truly thank you to the town staff for taking the time that you guys did to answer some of our questions and put this together. We knew that this was going to be coming. So as far as from the residents, I, for me personally, it's loud and clear that these folks do not want a California company out here influencing the town of Wellington or impinging on anything that we do here. When it comes to residents expressing concerns that we're not communicating enough, I think we do owe it to them to do better. But this particular group, I'm not sure should be assisting us with that type of communication. The fact is, these folks are a subsidiary of Multiplier Org. They're a 501(c)(3) that's got Zuckerberg and Rockefeller money behind them. And the fact that their website even mentions the word social equity, I think Hannah had mentioned weird political stuff. Well, the two words, social equity, right away say to me weird political stuff. So as far as asking the staff to do more work, I don't, I don't, I don't want to ask the staff to do more work. Certainly what I would say is I'd like to see us continue to pursue grants, maybe grants that have some money attached to them. I think that would be a good deal. There was a quote on page 108 of the municipal water efficiency plan that goes from Rebecca Mitchell, she's the director of the Colorado Water Conservation Board. She said, as Wellington begins implementing the efficiency measures outlined in the plan, that's our plan, please know that the CWCB staff will be available to provide technical and financial assistance. So I don't see any reason why we shouldn't reach out to Colorado organizations rather than California-based folks and see what we can get done there. Certainly also, I think there's, there are some pretty minor things we could do as far as the bill inserts. I mean, translate the sucker, make it double-sided and put the Spanish on the back, right? That's what I've got to say.
Yes, okay. The communication plan and the strategic plan that we set out two years ago was to improve engagement in general with the community. We made some impressive improvements in the last two years, including redoing our website, adding multiple language options, a ton of things for accessible information, our town halls, our example, our newsletter, everything that we do to reach people. Yet, for the last two years, people come to this podium and say that they didn't know or they didn't hear about it. Why can't we do this? Why can't we do that? We hear, I've heard for years and constantly that information isn't accessible. People in this room have said that many, many, many times. Not everybody comes to a meeting. We had a town hall, maybe 50 people came, which was a great turnout, but there is another, you know, the rest of the 12,000 people who didn't. So this opportunity for a free service that's facilitated and managed by our staff, because we keep saying, I have a hard time with this saying, I don't want to use staff time for this. And then at the same time saying, somebody else is implementing a plan here. I was like, you can't say, you can't use it against us both ways. The staff is facilitating this. They facilitate the engagement. They facilitate everything. That's why we're maybe upset that we're using our hours, yet then we're using it against us, saying that some other company is doing this to us. So this is being facilitated by our staff through opportunities that they found with their staff time to bring free services to our town. So they've already invested time in this and that's what we ask them to do is to chase this, chase these grant opportunities. So I don't think you can have it both ways, saying that it's a company doing something to us and it's not fair that we're using staff time because those are opposing views. This would be facilitated by us plus they're providing a product. They are not implementing a product. They are not pushing anything on us. They are providing us with a product to use as we see fit. They are not going to be driving that. That will be us. That's our town. That's our communication, but they will be providing free services to develop something for us to use. Amazing branding. Somebody brought up the idea of branding. Branding is so, so powerful. That is our logo. That's also something that had happened through our communication plan that we did is we have a new logo that is part of every single symbol that you see in Wellington. So it's our rec. It's our everything. It is organized and it is developed and it is professional. So regarding water efficiency, this is our opportunity to receive the similar services that we've done for the town have been widely, widely beneficial and successful to apply it towards water efficiency. This has nothing to do with politics and if it does, we will smash it because that has no business in Wellington. This is about providing a free service that we are going to be able to benefit from to our community to respond to the topmost concern of, I, we have bad communication. So regardless of all of our attempts in two years where it was our strategic plan number three, we still have people complaining that they don't know anything that's going on. And that was our third priority for the last two years. And here's an opportunity to resolve that and to make big, big gains. And not only that, we can use this method for any communication we want to do in the town. This is going to give us a model function product that we can apply to any type of communication that's really important, not just water efficiency. This is going to give us amazing best practices by people who this is their business and this is their functionality, their profession. We don't have these professionals in our staff, not who, who are in this realm. So to pass up on $25,000 of a service that we can use as we determine and see fit is not smart. I was going to use a different word, but I mean, we have full control of this. We're getting a great opportunity. Let's go. And we can communicate better with our community. I, I, I don't see a downside here because if it's about politics and let's just make an agreement right here to get that stuff out of there because that's not going to fly with me. So that's all I got to say, but I think it'd be really, really silly to pass on this.
Yeah, so I, I think I shared a lot of my comments. I appreciate everyone who took time to come out and speak on both sides. You know, some of you spoke in favor of this, some of you spoke in opposition to this. And I did want to clarify a couple of things from my standpoint is that my understanding has been from the beginning, I think it's been played out by staff, is that the consultants would be spending time putting things together, the staff would be helping to facilitate. So it is kind of a little bit of a both and. And I understand it's not like we don't give Hallie a paycheck. We like Hallie. So we're still going to pay Hallie. But for me, it's, it's more of a, are there different things that we could be having Hallie do rather than focusing on this? And I understand and I agree, we need to improve on communications, but we have heard repeatedly, time and again from our residents, work with us here, work with the people here. Stop bringing in outside companies to tell you how to talk to us. Just come talk to us. And some of the best conversations I've had with residents is just walking down the street. I did this a year ago. I'm just knocking on doors and dropping off flyers with the information on the town. I had great conversations with people about how can you do things better? How can you get things? And I do hear the concerns. My hope is that we would be able to keep things professional and not allow politics to come into it. Unfortunately, I shared concerns a year ago about the company that we were working with for our comprehensive plan. And unfortunately, it took a lot of work to pull out some political agenda that got put into our comprehensive plan. And I really don't want to go down that road again. So I would agree with trustee Mason. I think that there are ways that we can just work on improving communications. There are so many resources available for water conservation that we can easily put things on our website or do things that are minor changes that we can make to get information out there. And I would be happy as a trustee to spend some of my time to go knock on some doors and talk to people and put my time and effort into that. So I think that I would like to see us not work with this company and focus on things that we can figure out.
I will also offer my services on knocking on doors. I have it written down here. I loved doing it through our campaign. I loved meeting people. I loved hearing from people. And the biggest complaint was, is they don't come to meetings because it doesn't matter anyways. I know if you guys knocked on doors, you possibly heard the exact same thing I did, where why would we come? They don't listen anyway. So that was probably the most common complaint. So my thing is, we already paid Loganson some $40,000 for water studies. So I think we need to start out by engagement, face-to-face, set up a different kind of town hall, focus on enforcement where it's two warnings and the third, you're done. Like there's, there's things we can do at a local level. We are a new board and we have yet to set our strategic plan. I would love water to be a part of it, but we haven't set our plan yet. So we don't really know what that looks like at this time. But I do hear the residents and I hear the extra emails from people who aren't here tonight that emailed. This has been the biggest This has been the biggest response that I have had from anybody involving anything thus far, and they would like for us to keep it here. I would like to see those translator funds either get utilized in town meetings or get applied towards the HUD grant. So that's anywhere from $200 to $1,200. I would like to see those funds get transitioned somewhere else as well.
I agree completely with Brian on this. I don't think there's anything out there that's happening right now that you can get politics out of it completely, and that is one of the major concerns that I have. You know, right now, we have done probably the best thing as far as water conservation by increasing the price of it so dag high. I mean, every time you look at your bill, you're using less water right now. So I mean, that's reaching everybody at this point. And if we really want to start conserving too, maybe we need to put a moratorium on construction of new buildings until we do get our water treatment plant and everything else in the process at that point. You know, we need to be proactive, using local organizations like Brian was mentioning there. You know, they know what our community is. They know what Colorado is, and I think they've got a lot better handle on it than a California organization. You know, it's nice to have free money, but maybe there is some strings attached. I don't know. And I think it's got a lot of people concerned out there now, and we've got to be concerned about it. I think, you know, protect everybody.
So what I heard from the very beginning of the presentation was something that was really powerful from Hallie, and that was, is communication is my jam, but I'm out of ideas on how to get this message out and heard. There was this really awesome video on YouTube about communication, and I don't remember the name exactly, but I think it's called the nail on the head video. And if anybody's taken a communication class, you know this video. And it's a video where there's a lady sitting there, and she's talking to her husband, and she's talking about this terrible pain that she has in her head, and it just hurts. And he's looking at her like she is just crazy, out of her mind. And if you weren't watching this video, it's because she has this giant nail in her forehead. But it doesn't matter how he communicates this to her, she does not understand that the reason why she has pain in her head is because of this nail in her forehead. And the challenge that we face with communicating some of these conservation opportunities to the community is that not everybody hears the same information the same way. And so we've exhausted all of our staff opportunity and time, and they've come to us with a program and a plan and a way to fund it on how to enhance that communication based on the feedback that we got from residents who said, "We want to be accountable for our own water bills. Tell us how we can conserve our water and be responsible for keeping and maintaining our water bills so that they don't have to go higher." That was something that I heard during our multiple community engagements, was our community was actively saying, "I want to be accountable. How can I be engaged and what can I do?" And this is an opportunity for us to build out a more robust program and assist our staff with a communication plan that's going to help us with water conservation. There are numerous studies out there about water conservation and what is most effective, and it's communication plans, communication plans, communication plans. So it doesn't matter how many times I sit here and look at this can of Sprite, if I bring somebody else in the room, they're going to tell me that this is not green, this is lime green, because they see it and it's communicated to them in a different way. So if we're not exploring all of the opportunities to provide all of those facets of communication, that's a disservice. And then if we're spending more taxpayer dollars to figure out how to provide that communication, that's a disservice. So I support this opportunity, understand the political concerns, and I agree with Trustee Kenny, that if that presents itself in this situation, I think that we are all willing to take an active stance and do what we can to get rid of it, or be done with it, or take care of it. There's always an opportunity for a solution.
Yeah, we've heard from both sides. I mean, where I stand on this, I mean, look at Severance, they're a more conservative community than we are. They're not bolder overnight. To help them conserve water, they need it for their citizens more than we do, because they actually have a moratorium in place. I have a hard time falling to fear in this sort of situation based off of getting some hours for a toolkit so we can communicate to our citizens better, so they can have the opportunity to save money. I don't know why we would ever take away that opportunity for the people in our town to save money. Whether you agree with water conservation or not, is you're right, if you don't want to follow conservation, by all means, don't. There's people out there that probably do, and it could help their wallet. That's where I stand on it. I mean, I'm all for helping citizens communicate. I've heard both sides of this entire thing, and I'm not going to live in fear of some liberal company coming in to help us, help our citizens of our town, when we, as a board, can come together and say, "Hey, we're not going to let any of this political stuff come in and run our board." I think it's wise to, you know, take this opportunity to help our staff, save our staff money, save our town money, and help our citizens save money if they so choose. That's my stance on it. No further comments. Can I seek a motion?
I will make a motion that we approve the Water Now Atlanta Project Accelerator Grant Memorandum of Understanding. Side down.
Can I get a roll call?
Trustee Wiegand?
No.
Trustee Gator?
No.
Trustee Kenny?
Yes.
Trustee Mason?
No.
Trustee Teetz?
No.
Mayor Protam McDonald?
Yes.
Mayor Shosse?
Yes.
Motion fails with a four no, three yes vote.
Thank you, staff, for all the time you put into exploring that opportunity.
And I have one question, though, because, and just, if this is the direction of the trustees, that we are not to seek out grant opportunities from anything other than a conservative group, then I need to know that. And I don't know if CDOT would be considered a conservative group, or if Main Streets would be considered a conservative group, but I'm hearing from you, it was voted no because of the political...
Absolutely not. That is not why I voted no. So I'll say that right here and now. That's not why I voted no.
I think that's something we can discuss in the...
We'll bring it up later. I just, I'm, we put a lot of time into this because that was the direction we were given, staff was given, and understanding that we can talk about water bills and putting flyers into water bills, the open rate on water bills is minimal, because most people get them electronically. So I can honestly tell you I'm a little frustrated, but of course, I always get over it, and we figure it out, and we come up with new ideas and options and things like that, but looking at, looking at the opportunity, it's just rough, because we are stretched so thin. So moving on, I just wanted to throw that out to you. Thank you.
We will now close our regular meeting and open the Liquor License Authority Board. Time being 8:57. Can I get a roll call, please?
Trustee Gator?
Here.
Trustee Kenny?
Present.
Trustee Mason?
Here.
Trustee Teetz?
Here.
Trustee Wiegand?
Here.
Mayor Protam McDonald?
Here.
Mayor Shosse?
Here.
Thank you, mayor and trustees. The Wellington Main Streets Program has submitted a special event permit application for the Brew Fest Festival that's going to be held on June 4th of this year. The Wellington Main Streets Program has submitted all the documentation required for a special event permit, including a map of the premise location, permission to use the premise, which is Centennial Park, a certificate of good standing with Colorado's Secretariat of State that shows their nonprofit status, the application itself, and a questionnaire kind of outlining what their event's going to be. So it's going to take place on June 4th from 2:00 to 5:00 p.m. The application shows the time being 9:00 to 6:30 p.m., which gives them time to set up and tear down after the actual event from 2:00 to 5:00. There will be a number of local breweries involved with the event, and the alcohol will be served by TIPS-certified employees of those breweries. There will be food available for sale at the event from Leave It to Cleaver Food Truck, The Cakery, and The Barbecue Love Shack. They will have security provided by event, landmark event staffing, and they'll also have three Lammer County Sheriff's Office available at the event for security. The Wellington Main Streets Program has submitted a special event for Brew Fest in 2021, and there were no issues reported from that event. They also did have a special event permit issued earlier this year for the Hoppy Fest, and I have not heard any issues that came from that event either. The, there was a notice that's required by state statute for this public hearing tonight, or for this public meeting, and I have received no protest for this application. And Anita Hardy from the Main Street Program is here, if you have any questions for her, and I'm available for questions as well. If the board has any questions, and then Anita and I can...
Couple of quick questions. I think it's in there, just not positive, so it looks like you guys are using a chain link fence to keep things boxed in. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure. A little colorblind with red and greens, like I think...
There are little dots there. It is fully fenced.
Okay.
And the security is at all entrance entrances.
Interesting. Okay. And then the three deputies you're having, those are separate from our normal patrol deputies, those will be three separate sheriff's deputies. Okay, great. And then with the event, I've never been there, so I don't know, is it something where only people over drinking age are allowed in, or is it anyone can come in, family, kids, or how does that work? I don't, how are you guys managing that?
Sure, that is through ticket sales and for over 21, so drinking age only. And ticket sales are absolutely required for entrance into the event, and everybody is ID-checked as well at the entrance, and then no alcohol leaves outside of those gated areas.
Okay. Fantastic. No further questions. Thank you.
You're very welcome.
I didn't know that was open to additional questions other than the liquor thing. So the bathrooms that are there, porta-potties, are those still accessible to anyone not attending the event?
You know, that's a great question, Trustee Teetz, and boy, perfect timing with all of our ADA and training that the staff attended today as well. And traditionally, we have not fenced that area in, so that way it was still accessible by the park. Our understanding is that our Public Works Department is going to help us, but to make sure that we do have that area enclosed in, and then we also will have a security guard at that restroom area for the restrooms.
Will anybody in the park be able to access the bathrooms that day, besides the ones attending the Brew Fest?
That I don't yet quite have any answer to, because we don't have that fencing component quite calculated out as to exactly where that's going to go, based on the new information we found out today with the requirements.
Got it. Because two of those are the town's porta-potties, correct?
They're permanent. Well, I don't know, permanent, but we weren't going to move them.
Got it. Perfect.
As shown in the map, though, there is no fencing separating it, so it would be accessible from the parking lot...
That is correct.
From the event and from the park, as shown in the application.
Got it, but that might change.
That could potentially change.
Got it.
Yes. But that's just going to be whatever that requirement needs to be in order for that security of the Brew Fest itself, and then what's necessary for access.
Got it. So do you have your own tentative plans of adding an ADA bathroom so we can still leave those two porta-potties accessible?
Can I put a point of order, Trustee Teetz? My questions about fencing were about children being in and out, so we do need to keep the question specific to the liquor license. I know I asked about fencing, but that's because we have, I just want to make sure children weren't coming into the event, so getting into like ADA restrooms and things would be outside of our liquor board.
Got it.
In this case, it is about the location of the fence, and that is a specific, so I think, we're in kind of the general realm, not strung it too far, but you know, the location of the fence and what is secure and what isn't secure is an important component of that.
So I guess, is my question, is the concern that people are going to take beer to the porta-potty? Help me understand why we're worried about if the bathrooms are inside or outside of the fenced area. Just help me understand, because we can't take beer outside the fenced area, so if people need to use the bathroom.
If those porta-potty areas are unfenced and individuals are walking around with a beer, could they potentially leave that Brew Fest area? Or could somebody actually enter into the Brew Fest area that doesn't have a ticket or is potentially underage? And so we want to make sure that that is secure and safe for all the participants there, and that we don't have a possibility of underage drinker entering the Brew Fest.
Can you tell me more about the role of security at each entrance and exit, then? Would they not be verifying that for every single person that's entering and exiting the event?
I do not believe that the security individuals are going to be verifying, but all of our participants will be having wristbands on, so they will know whether or not somebody has been ID'd as far as being a ticketed individual inside of that, inside the area. So if somebody does not have a wristband and is not supposed to be in it, then we should be able to, you know, have them leave.
I think it's great.
A great opportunity for the community.
Yeah. It's good for the town.
Thank you. Yeah, it's really exciting.
Any comments from the public on this agenda?
Mr. Sapiens, so is asking if there's any way the ADA's involved in this not appropriate for this? This is just voting on if they get a liquor license or not, right?
This is comment, not question. So if you have a comment, make it.
Thanks, I appreciate it. I hope in my comment that the people who are putting on this event will consider putting in some accommodations for people with disabilities, people in wheelchairs and walkers, to walk on that grass, it's really difficult. So I really hope that the people who are in charge of this will take that into consideration and make a plan that if somebody is in need of accommodation, maybe point somebody on their boards. Like we have Callie that we emailed for the town. It'd be great if they could have a person on that board that you can contact on an email and make that part of their flyers and stuff that they put out about it and the internet stuff about it, that if you need an accommodation, here's a person to contact, and then be able to work with that person for a reasonable accommodation and make that available to the population. Thanks.
Okay. Any final comments from the board?
I've attended Main Street events before, and they are incredibly well-run and maintained regarding the security of liquor items. I've never seen anything so...
Okay. With no further comments, I would like to see a motion.
I move to approve the special event permit application for Brew Fest as submitted by Wellington, Colorado Main Streets Program.
I'll second.
Can I get a roll call?
Trustee Gator?
Yes.
Trustee Kenny?
Yes.
Trustee Mason?
Yes.
Trustee Teetz?
Yes.
Trustee Wiegand?
Yes.
Mayor Protam McDonald?
Yes.
Mayor Shosse?
Yes.
I read the recommendation that the special event permit also applies to the liquor license approval?
It's a special event permit. It's a special event liquor permit.
Okay. I just want to make sure I didn't say the word liquor.
It's confusing.
No, it's okay. That's good.
We will now close our liquor license authority at 9:08 p.m. and resume the regular meeting. Are there any reports from the town turn?
No reports.
Ms. Garcia, do you have any...
Couple of things real quick. We talked a little bit, we mentioned the HUD grant, and knowing that we're out of funds, I have recommended to our finance department, if we get any more applications, we'll just go on ahead and fund it at this point in time. I have recommended to our finance department, if we get any more applications, we'll just go on ahead and fund it at this point in time. Um and I will set up time, Vic and I are actually meeting on May eighteenth to talk about where those funds would come from. I don't want anybody to be without, i- if they're in need, I don't want to say, well, we've run out of money. I, I don't want that to be an option, so we, we will, we will fund it for now until we come before you and give you some options on how that gets paid out and how much money you want it to be. Vic and I will talk about it, right, I'm assuming we'll probably do something with the board discretionary fund because that would be an appropriate purpose for that. I believe everyone received an email regarding fireworks and um I started, I did a little calendar today about where if, if changes were to be made by ordinance to be in effect for the Fourth of July event, we would need to have an ordinance on the May twenty-fourth agenda, which is the next regular meeting. So um I mentioned it to Mayor Shosse, he said he was interested, so I wanted to bring it before the trustees and see if that was something you all would like to have presented before you on May twenty-fourth.
Absolutely.
And um potentially, I've understood maybe some larger, higher fines. Um I can send out some drafts of things and maybe is, we can, and Dan and I can work together on how this looks, but um your um Sergeant Cherry will be making a presentation here very shortly on his report and he had, he had forwarded to me the Bertha'd um code. And so it, it, and it's a stricter and provides definitive information about what types of fireworks are illegal in the town, which I think is really helpful. Because looking at our code, I have no idea what that means, and can I have a sparkler, please, can I have a sparkler, I don't know. So I think that having some definitive information or language in our code might be helpful, so Dan and I will work on that and get something to you just kind of as a draft. Hopefully have it ready here very shortly, maybe next week, Dan's got a lot on his plate, but we'll see what we can do, ready for you on the twenty-fourth.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. That's all I got.
Are there any reports from staff?
Um did you want to have Sergeant Cherry report out?
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's.
Was that for the?
Yeah, that's the next item, but.
Oh, sorry.
Sergeant Cherry, you'd like to come up and present?
I'm going to share my screen, I'm not sure how to pub you that.
Are you logged in to the Zoom meeting?
Is it the same information in the packet?
It is.
Okay, we could probably share that, that's possible.
Can I share a video please?
Oh, we're just, she's telling me that we could share.
Yeah, we can, Crystal's trying to pull it up, so you don't have to share. You'll just have to tell her what, where to go.
Report starts on page ninety-four.
Yeah, she's. Oh, who, are you?
Ninety, ninety-one.
Do you want Crystal to share her screen?
Sure.
Okay, she's getting there. There you go, there you go. She's in.
All right, as the old, I'm sorry, Sergeant Matt Cherry, Lammer County Sheriff's Office, I'm your Wellington Sergeant. Um this is, this is our Wellington monthly report, although we haven't done a monthly report other than in writing. Uh we're hoping to do this on a monthly basis, so you can kind of get the gist of, of where we are um in, in town, what we're doing. Uh we present a monthly report to Patty every month and she's providing that to you. Some of this information um is just kind of giving you the gist of um some of the uh the, the larger cases. You'll see it on the screen here, just talking about uh some of the drug interdiction that we've done here in town. Uh some of the things that we're doing, community engagement type events with the Boys and Girls Club, bringing our SWAT Bearcat, Crime Scene Band, some of those things over there. And this is our, our March report, the April report was just approved and, but we could not present that to you today, so I apologize. We're about a month behind, hoping that we can get caught up to some extent. Uh but we did do a bunch of community engagement, engagement events in March, including the uh the Kiwanis Club Bike Rodeo. And our cup, and obviously we did some ride alongs with uh some of you folks. Are you, uh, is that your screen or is that my screen?
It's my screen.
If you could. This is not doing anything. Um yeah, you can continue to go down, please.
It's going, it's going.
There it is. All right, so, whoa, too far, too far. Uh so these are some of um the, the deputies that are, deputies that are not assigned to town. These are some of those hours, so you can see uh just the typical time that we were on calls was a hundred one hours. Uh and then non-Wellington deputies conducted about twenty-six point eight hours in town. And that's just driving around, doing general patrols, um that could be while Wellington deputies are working, that could be uh during midnight hours. The deputies will come up, they'll, they'll patrol around when the deputies go home, generally about two thirty in the morning. Um and that's what I counted about for about a hundred twenty-eight hours of deputies outside of town coming in and patrolling around. Or handling calls when either we're tied up or um when we're not here. Sorry, it's really slow. Here's your uh March totals, um dispatch calls of, we had five hundred ninety-six calls for the month of, month of March. Um a hundred and fifty-three of those were dispatched calls where we're getting a call from a citizen and citizen wants us to go to, to this location or that. Our deputies are very busy in those four hundred and forty-three officer-initiated calls. These are calls that our deputies are initiating on their own, whether that be a traffic stop, a business check, something along those lines. Uh so our deputies are very busy jumping from um call to call when they had, they actually had the availability. You notice we're slightly up from March of this year over two thousand twenty-one. Uh our dispatch calls were slightly up about thirty-eight percent and our deputies are doing a little bit more, about twenty-eight percent more than they were actually doing uh last year. Now, this um, the screen, some of these calls, uh I had to kind of do some research on. Now, when a citizen calls in and says, hey, I want to report um this incident happened. Our dispatchers will go into that um, that incident, they'll create a call and they will title it whatever they think that is most appropriate. There may be times, though, where our deputies go up on, uh they show up on scene, they investigate whatever the incident is. And it, it's nothing related to what our dispatchers actually typed in. If that call gets closed out by the dispatcher with the original um call type, that's what you're gonna end up seeing in this report. Um so, for instance, in April, I saw that there's a couple motor vehicle, um sorry, um motor vehicle thefts. And it turned out that, that they were not motor vehicle thefts at all. Um so, uh but our dis- our deputies investigated it and they found out this is not what it is. So what we're gonna do to try to get ahead of that uh in the future is making sure that our deputies are changing that call type. So that it's not actually, actually showing up uh under this. So if you see some of these numbers, you're like, holy smokes, what's going on? It may not be exactly what you think it is, okay? And if you have any questions that are specific to any of these numbers, by all means, let me know and I'll just have to do a little research, I'll, I'll, I'll give you the breakdown of what that is.
Do you have a question on the drug case, so if you could look into that, the five hundred percent increase, I mean, I know it was four, but that's still. That's, and I like that you guys did showcase in the beginning that what you guys were able to do is stop it, some of the drug selling was happening, but I know that has been something that's been a, a large concern for a lot of citizens, so.
And you, and, and I did, actually did look at some of these drug cases, because I was kind of wondering that myself. A couple of these cases were um, were found paraphernalia, somebody found a crack pipe in the street. Another person found a camera, um a small jar of an unknown substance that they thought was some sort of drug. Turned out not to be a drug, after all. Um one of the calls was a um, a juvenile that had gone to a friend's house, the friend offered him marijuana. Um he smoked it, he had some adverse effects, um and that's how we got that to the call. So it's not necessarily that, you know, we have major drug rings going on. That's good to hear, hey, so it could be something very.
Okay.
Any other questions about anything you're seeing up there?
The pedestrian contact subject ST, is that street?
Uh subject stops.
Okay.
So if we see a, a pedestrian walking down the road and we wanna just stop and have a conversation, may be consensual, may not be consensual. Depends on what we're seeing at the time, that's kind of what we're, what you're seeing there. Any other questions, and I know that um Trustee Teets had a question about what a ready report is. A ready report is a report every drunk driver immediately reports. Uh so if the citizen calls and says, hey, I see this possible drunk driver driving down the road, um they will call that in, that's what our, what our dispatch will enter it as. We will try to intercept that vehicle, figure out whether this is truly somebody that's intoxicated, um just a very bad driver or they're distracted of some type, so. Any other questions about any of those?
One thing that'd be helpful, I think, was just in, when, I, I appreciate you wanting to do this monthly, it's good to just kind of have a speed on it, because this is one of the questions I do get asked from time, time my citizens is. You know, what is the, I had this, a friend of mine actually just moved here from Fort Collins and they left because of drug. And so they're asking, what is it like here, so it's good to have these updates. If you could just, when we've got like large increases and now, I mean, sometimes a two hundred percent increase might be from one to two, I'm not so concerned about that. But once you've got a significant change over the average, if you can just check into those like you did here, saying, here's what we had, that, that, those would be great, because that's typically where I'm gonna have questions is, okay. I'm seeing a spike now, neighbor problems, I'm not super concerned about neighbor problems, but when we talk about sex, sex assaults and theft and drugs and I see spikes on that, it's like, okay, well. Is there something going on that we need to be addressing? So in future, just like you did, just presenting information would be great.
Yes, indeed, we'll do that. You just sold out our, our call categories, and these are some, just some of the trends, you'll see anything that's in yellow is actually getting increased. I'm gonna go back to what I originally said, that's, may not be exactly what it is up there. Um but you'll see vehicle theft, that vehicle theft was a trailer uh that was stolen off of the streets and vehicle trespasses, those were, were um. Uh one was actually a vehicle trespass, one was actually from last year, it just got captured this month. Animal calls, you know, we, we will respond to animal calls, um but we try to rely on, on Jim LaFerty to help us out with some of those types of things. The disturbances, I think what we're gonna end up seeing going forward, people are getting out of the house, it's getting outside of COVID. Um so we're gonna start seeing some of these types of disturbances happening, it's just people getting out and doing things, so. Any questions about any of that? No, thank you. We are doing a lot more um traffic stops, traffic, uh traffic enforcement, and that was based upon some of the feedback that I was getting from you trustees. Just on, hey, I've had some concerns about people crossing the road where they weren't supposed to, crosswalks, um speeding, that type of thing, so we did do a lot more traffic enforcement. Um traffic gets um kind of confused sometimes, you'll see some of these numbers spike. It may not be an actual traffic stop where we're pulling behind someone, turning our lights on, some of these things actually get captured. If I pull on a vehicle that's parked on the side of the road, um and I'm just gonna get out and check this parked vehicle, they actually lump that in as a traffic stop. Um can't change that, um but realize those types of things uh happen. I contacted a, a gentleman that was in the parking lot of Burger King, he just looked a little odd where he was. Um and our dispatch entered that in as a traffic stop, so. Um but we are actually doing a lot more as far as traffic stops. You notice your motor vehicle accidents um are slightly up, um Trustee Teets had posed a question regarding that and uh we're finding that people are backing into cars in parking lots and stuff like that, we're not having any major fender benders or, or anything like that. I'm hoping that we just didn't jinx that, um but um DUI arrests are um, are about equal. Traffic problems are, are typically down, and the traffic problems, those could be, those could be as simple as um we find a, a parked vehicle on the side of the road, has expired tags. Um something like that, that could be a traffic problem, or somebody calls and says, hey, my neighbor's speeding through my neighborhood, that could be a traffic problem, okay? Um and then obviously the ready reports are slightly up.
I'm excited that people are feeling comfortable enough to holler at you guys and report that they suspect drunk drivers.
I would uh prefer that instead of it's um coming up on Let's Talk Wellington or something like that, pick up the phone, call us, that's what we're here for. Uh these are just calls by, by hour, you'll notice that our busiest hours are in the early evening hours. Um you don't see a whole lot after we go home, how, at two thirty in the morning. However, our valley units are actually the ones that are coming up and, and covering up some of those calls, but those are, there's, those are very few.
The evening hours is when you have that overlap momentarily, right, where there's, got it.
Yep, so we ju- usually we'll have two deputies on, if not three, uh including a corporal, and I'm gonna be going to kind of a, a night-ish schedule. Early day or late day, or early evening, so, so for some of these spikes, we may even have four cars driving around.
Got it.
Um now this, I just got this myself, it almost looked like there, um our deputies that are assigned to town, those are the deputies that are in blue. That uh we handle no calls for service between midnight and five in the morning. Um of course, we go home typically about two thirty, but I think that this, this is a little skewed. Um but our dispatch calls, you're gonna see the difference between our Wellington deputies and the deputies that are coming in and helping us out. Whether that be during the day or at night, uh late at night, uh so about seventy percent of the time, we're, we're handling those dispatch calls. We get busy, they can come in, they can help us out with some of those types of things. We're doing a lot more of the officer, um self-initiate type stuff, but they're still coming in, I, I checked some of the call logs, I noticed that in the wee hours of the morning, they're coming in, they're doing business checks and those types of things uh when the Wellington deputies are not around. Response times of calls, I know that uh this came up, we were trying to adjust this, um this indicates, and I was kind, kind of surprised by that. But um was, the average response times, and this is, citizen calls in, says, hey, I want to report this. It gets to a deputy and the deputy actually gets on scene, so it's by the time we receive the call and then when we actually show up on scene. Um notice, there were no high priority calls, but medium and low, um there's an average of eleven minutes for medium type calls and a thirty-four minute response for low priority calls. What we did find in some of the data is that if citizen calls and says, hey, I want to call in this whatever. Um and a deputy picks up the, picks up the phone and calls that citizen and they're never on scene, then that's actually skewing our data because they're not actually enter it, entering it as the deputy arrived. Um so we're trying to fix some of those numbers, if that makes any sense.
I have a quick question, sorry.
Your question is?
So how of those average like call times, how many, like, so I'm assuming that, like, if they're emergent, it would be under the high category? Like, how often would you say that that is likely in this community, or how much of, how many of those calls are emergent, are they all emergent?
Uh these sorts of, the high priority call, yeah, if, if it's a high priority call, it's, it's something that where somebody's injured. Um there's, somebody's crying out, says, hey, I'm being attacked, you know, it's those types of calls where we had actually entered those in as high priority calls. Um but for whatever reason, in March, we didn't get any of those uh where they were actually entered in as a high priority call. Does that answer your question?
Yeah.
Yeah, I appreciate seeing this, the fixed numbers, because I know when I did my ride along, the average time from the call to being on scene was about five to ten minutes. Ten minutes was long, I think it was usually like five minutes, if less, so I was, twenty-six, I was like, whoa.
So the average time on calls, uh all Wellington calls, this is just the amount of time that our deputies, on average, were actually spending on scene, dealing with whatever that call was. And then that's it, that's all I've got for you. What questions do you have for me, any?
So do you use that information, that call time, how much time you spend on it? So do you use that information, that call time, how much time you spend on an average response for projecting out, like, how many deputies that you need? Does that help with some of your staffing models?
Not necessarily, because our deputies are all assigned their standard shifts, so I'm not trying to adjust anything as far as staffing levels, because they're all set from my day shift deputy, my power deputy, my swing shift deputy. Does that make sense? So I'm never having to look at any of these stats to adjust staffing, because those are typically preset.
And the nice thing about having LCSO involved is if all of the officers are busy here, they'll dispatch from out of area to bring in another one.
They will.
Which I think is awesome, it's like having your pick of how many officers you need, you have them. I think that one was a huge one.
Yes, ma'am, and that, that actually happens fairly often on a day shift. It's very routine that if we're tied up on a call, we have deputies that are coming in from outside of Wellington to pick up other calls that may be pending, or to come and help us for whatever calls that we're on. So that's, that's very, that's every day.
I know I said this in my email, but I'm gonna say it again, that is a huge kudos about the amount of drugs and the kind of drugs that you confiscated in that, I hate to call it, well, drug deal, over at that store. I think that is huge, and the more that we have that drug task force involvement, the better that it is going to be for Wellington on keeping methamphetamines, heroin, pretty hard drugs out of Wellington. Because, correct me if I'm wrong, those are the kind of the ones you seized, is...
We do, and we're seeing a gigantic increase in fentanyl, so it's here to stay, it's not gonna go away anytime soon, and those are the drugs that I'm most concerned about. Our deputies being affected by that, firefighters being affected by that, EMTs being affected by that, so they are here, and I know that, that some citizens have concerns about drugs in our town. There are drugs in our town, there are drug dealers in our town. We know who some of them are, we're keeping a very close watch on them, as is the Northern Colorado Drug Task Force. They're very involved, I've had these conversations, I've had conversations with them every month, just about kind of what they're doing and people that they're kind of looking at, but there's this thing called the constitution, and so we have to make sure we're following that and doing everything appropriately.
Yes. Well, I am extremely grateful, because I have kids that live in this, this town, and the less likely of it to end up in an improper place where a kid's going to mistakenly pick it up, I'm, I'm grateful, so.
Some, a program that I've heard about that's being integrated through Colorado is the Flock Cameras, which is like a tracking program used by law enforcement to monitor drug trafficking and human trafficking, especially at like federal highway points where there's those major intersections. And is that something that the sheriff's office has explored, or?
I'm not aware of any of those types of cameras, I know that we were exploring what were called license plate readers, but...
Same thing, similar program.
There are concerns about that as well, some people like the idea, some people don't like the idea. We have a number of patrol cars that actually had some of these license plate readers mounted to the car, and then you drive around and they scan your license plate, if there was an entry somewhere, somewhere there about the person was wanted, that was associated with that vehicle, or the person's license was revoked, or something along those lines, person was missing, this is a missing person, it'll hit on those. But I'm not exactly sure kind of where we're at, I don't know if Lieutenant Badger can talk about that, because he's, he was instrumental in getting more cars with these license plate readers.
Hey, Troy Badger, Sheriff's Office. Real quick, we just installed new Axon cameras in several of our cars today with a license plate reader feature with those. The Flock system, we're actually rolling out a test in Bertha right now, because the communities themselves, or the housing divisions have to buy them themselves, they don't work, they don't sell directly to law enforcement. So we're trying that out, because they eliminate all the residents in that housing area, they pull their plates out of there, so they're not getting read all the time and uploaded into areas. So it's only picking up out of area vehicles that are coming out there, because we have a major problem down there, somebody will come from Longmont, drop a vehicle off, steal another one to get greedy, whatever the case. So they came up from Castle Rock and gave us a presentation, some of the communities or housing areas down there are looking at purchasing the Flock system, I'm very excited about it, I wanna see how it works, and they kind of, until we get to it, we are looking into that, and I'd like to try to roll that out up to here, once we see kind of what that, what our success rate is with that, and if it's worth getting into. City of Fort Collins and City of Loveland are looking at going in with them to put them on the major highways, like Highway 34, so we can share that data and information, but again, they typically don't like to sell to law enforcement, they like to target the community areas and, you know, reoccurring fee that's gonna go with that, so we're trying, you know. Any other questions on the license plate, the Flock system? I'm glad you brought it up, because we're excited to see how this thing works, so.
That's it, that's my question.
Any else? You guys are doing great, thank you. Thank you so much, appreciate that. Quarterly report from Main Streets.
Hi again. I had provided a report for you in your packets, and just wanted to be available for any questions that you had on that report. Simple report for the first quarter of the year.
Thank you for all your hard work. We're on the report together.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
I don't have anybody here from Boise, Wisconsin.
Are there any reports from the board? Start with the meeting.
And I have one, I just forgot the date. There is going to be a committee meeting regarding the new landfill, I think on the 14th or someone.
The 19th?
It's next Thursday.
It's the 18th, Wednesday.
It's Wednesday.
It's on my calendar for the 18th.
I said the date.
All right, here's the Glammer County Public Meeting for the North Landfill Site Development. Yes, it's gonna be here at 6:00 PM, so if you wanna learn more about the landfill that will be going north of Wellington, that would be a great opportunity to come and learn more. Also, if you have any other questions about it, I serve on the policy council, representing Wellington, so I'd be happy to meet with you if you have any questions. The other thing I wanted to share is, I needed to give a shout out and a public thank you and applause to our Public Works Team for, clap first and then tell it. They have a security grant that's going to be applied towards the Safe Routes to School Program, where they're going to be enhancing the safety for multimodal, but a lot of crosswalks, speed bumps, all the things that people beg of me, and I hear a lot of complaints in problematic areas that generally surround kids walking to school. It's a significant grant, and honestly, it was really led by staff, because that committee is just forming at this point, and they really took the initiative to secure those funds, and there's gonna be an opportunity for so much more. So it's really, really good news, it's gonna impact everyone in our community, specifically our children, the most vulnerable when it comes to crossing streets, including the ones that my daughter was mentioning to Sergeant Cherry the other day. So as they continue through that plan and get more details, I'm sure it'll be shared more, but it's fantastic news, I think somewhere in the range of $250,000 to $300,000. So fantastic news, so I really wanted to thank them for this. That's all I got.
So we already kind of covered one of my items, which was the 4th of July, I did with the email, so I'm glad that we've got it done. One thing I did wanna bring to the board, so kind of that can help give direction to them, I stopped off, Sergeant Cherry wasn't there, but I talked to him today, and talked with some of the deputies, one of the things that they mentioned is potentially a better way to help with that is, a lot of time to do warnings, right? We tell people, well, you do realize that this firework you shot off caught some of the house on fire, you would be liable for all the damage, which is a nice thing to do, but one of the things that I discussed with them is that we really put out and make it as clear as we can, through social media and other places, saying, this is your warning, if deputy, if you shoot off illegal fireworks and deputies show up, you're going to be sent to court and we're gonna push for the highest fine. I know my neighbors leave town for the 4th of July because of all the fire, not because of our show, but because of everyone else's fireworks that they have to leave. So I think that if that's something this board is okay with, is directing staff to do that, as well as to look at not only clarifying, which I think is important, we need to be clear about what is illegal, what's not, but also be very clear that you won't get a warning. If you're shooting off illegal fireworks, maybe we do like the week before and the week after the 4th of July, if you get caught, you are going to be going to court and you're going to be facing potentially, whatever, the $1,000 fine or whatever. And just basically, my thought process is, you all know this is not something, if you're going to Wyoming to buy the fireworks, you know, you're not supposed to be doing it, but I wanted to see that's something the board is comfortable with, giving as a staff as direction for that, so when they bring us something back on the 24th, that, whatever is needed, because I know with the conversation Mr. Sapienza, if we're going to be taking a really hard line on that, it probably needs to be something that we take an official action on, so it's not a surprise that it shows up, if that makes sense.
I didn't want my yard catching on fire, so I have had to spray my yard when it has caught on fire. I had mortar shells exploding on my house last year, so yeah, no, I think that it's one of those things, and don't get me wrong, I absolutely love fireworks. But right now, and this day and age, with all of the watering restrictions being set in place, our yards, our trees, bushes, they're gonna be dry. So and if you have all these particles flying everywhere after they explode, it is so dangerous.
I think we all, we all agree that it's something we should look into, I mean, with that's with PTSD, whatever the case may be, it's no fun. So yeah, I think...
I'm not, I'm not supportive of heavy-handed enforcement.
Any, any stricter policy?
Uh, stricter policies, yes, but heavy-handed enforcement, no.
Okay. So how do we wanna move forward with this? I guess we can talk about it.
I mean, we can have discussion on it when staff brings that back and leaves the board, and we can find, I don't wanna take much time tonight, I just wanted to bring up this, this is where I'm coming from, so I'd like to see more of that, but I think there, we should have a conversation to kind of figure out where is the good middle ground.
Yeah, because I'm not totally clear on exactly what that enforcement process looks like, or whose authority it is, or like, how, like, how much do we wanna be involved in telling people what they can and can't do on their property? So there's a balance there, so. I'm not in favor of heavy-handed enforcement, maybe stricter fines, but I need more information before I can make a good decision about that.
And I think as we...
We work with law enforcement, see what they've done in other municipalities.
Mm-hmm, and I think as we, if we're working to bring something forward in the next two weeks, we already had some conversations with Sergeant Cherry, and I think we need to get a handle on what that might potentially look like. We did a little bit of research in my office today, and I do not know that, I cannot find a single citation that's gone to municipal court in the town of Wellington since at least 2016. So as we're talking about fines and citations, know that in the last six years, there's not been a single municipal offense citation for this. So, so going from that to $1,000, first...
I also, from my standpoint, I don't wanna be having a discussion where we approve a $1,000 fine because someone's house burned. I don't want to be like, well, okay, now we have to.
Absolutely, absolutely. We do, yeah, but I need careful taking rights.
Perfect. The other item that I wanted to bring up was a discussion that we had with the prior board about the administrative, call it administrative transfers, out of the water fund and the sewer fund into the general fund, and at the time, there was really no clear definition on what exactly those funds were for. I know there was discussion on putting a pause on transferring those funds to help with easing some of the burden on the water and sewer funds. The prior board chose to just hold off on changing anything, because they were in the middle of a bunch of other stuff. I would like to see us revisit that, whether that's a work session or something like that. First, for me, because technically, we are the board of like three entities, right, with the board of the water, and of the sewer, and of the town, well, if I'm a company and you say, well, give me $700,000, I'm gonna ask you, well, what are you, what am I getting for that? If you tell me, well, just something, that's not gonna fly. We've had several conversations about another fee that we've been dealing with that we don't understand exactly what it is, so it's kind of a similar thing to that, and so at the very least, I would like to make sure that we understand exactly what those funds are going towards, and then we as the board can decide, are we okay with that, do we need to make adjustments, but that's probably an item for a work session coming up, but I wanted to bring that up as a concern. I wanna, I wanna make sure that doesn't get lost, because that was a fairly significant, it's, if I remember correctly, it was about a million and a half dollars between the two funds, or somewhere in that range, so it's a fairly significant amount that is, again, burden being put on the water and sewer, so I'd like to really take a look at that.
Perhaps that is something we can talk about during budget, I did mention it to Vic, so it is on her radar, she's, we'll, we'll talk about it internally, but I know that needs to get in front of you, and she mentioned, she's, I asked her about it, and she says, I feel like that was another bomb left, can I get that little Ukrainian dog to find them? She's, she's so fun, but, but you know, every time we get a question about something related to finance, it takes just so much research, and so I wanted to let her know right away, knowing that may, you know, hopefully we can talk about this during budget, and we can give you some more definitive information, and give us some direction.
Um, no, just, we're, as we're getting ready to transition from CAC to, from CAC Board Liaison Positions, we're kind of have some fold over, John and I had an interesting last like month trying to figure out where we both sat on the board. I will say that we do possibly have some items that will be being brought over specifically regarding ADA accommodations that were not in CAC's budget. They haven't planned for ADA accommodations previous to this, but in planning for the fourth, some of the requested items, one we were made available, there's a lot of grants that are available for this kind of stuff, but I might be bringing back some of the shade awnings, stuff like that, that they are requesting to our trustee board for discretionary uses, on helping take care of a list that possibly will be forming.
We're good, right? We're good, I went around the circle?
Where am I?
All right. I mean, no further business, can I get a motion to move here?
Second.
Trustee Kenny? Trustee Mason?
Yes.
Trustee Ts?
Yes.
Trustee Wigan?
Yes.
Trustee Gator?
Yes.
Mayor Potem McDonald?
Yes.
Mayor Shusty?
But only Tuesday.